Patience and sorry that we're late for technical difficulties. I wanted to call to order the Charlotte City Council's Strategy Session. We have done this Strategy Session in accordance with the electronic laws of round meetings, as well as maintaining the appropriate records. Tonight, we have three items on our agenda. A Safe Charlotte update, and then we have a number of long-term plans that are part of what we are not only doing today, but will have an impact 10 to 20 years out. And then we'll have some council committee report outs. So I'm going to ask a couple of things. One, the manager is going to do the Safe Charlotte update. I wanted to ask on the item number two, where we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan and the development ordinance, as well as the mobility network, that we allow the staff to go through the presentations, and then just if everybody would get their questions, then we'll open up the floor for questions. We'll start off with the mobility plan, which I think is the shortest update, then go to the 2040 Plan, and then the UDO. And then on the committee reports, if you'll just think about as committee members, what is the most important question that you have for the committees as they're going through any of the topics that they're going to report out on? So with that, I'm going to have introductions by the Charlotte City Council members first, and then we'll go to the staff in the room. I'm Vi Lyles, and I serve as mayor, and now we'll start with our city clerk.
Mr. Johnson, your county clerk?
Patrick Baker, city attorney. Marcus Jones.
Marcus Jones, city manager.
DeNada Jackson, Office of Constituent Services.
Kay Cunningham, Mayor's Office.
All right, so now, did we do the council yet? All right, let's start with Mayor Protam.
Mayor Protam Julie Eisel, serving at large.
Happy Monday, Dimple Arch, Mayor. Mr. Phillips?
Red Phillips, at large.
Cracking Winston, at large.
Now, let's start with our district members.
Markan Eggleston, District 1.
Alcon Graham, District 2.
Troy Watlington, District 3.
Renee Johnson, District 4.
Good evening, Matt Newton, District 5.
Tarek Akari, District 6, also known as the gateway to Ballentine, in fact.
And here, representing Ballentine, Ed Driggs, District 7.
Okay, we got jokes today, huh? Okay, all right, let's go ahead and get started. Mr. Jones, I'm going to turn it over to you for the first agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, and I'll ask Julia Martin to come into 267 as we go through this short presentation. Hello, Julia. I just want the council to take a look at maybe one of the hardest-working folks that we have on the team. This is one assignment, as you will recall, you approved the Safe Charlotte Plan back in October, and there were six recommendations, and with those six recommendations, I can tell you that we're in a process to have deliverables, all of those, before the end of this fiscal year, June 2021, with one exception, that would be a little bit later. And one of the reasons that I'm bringing this to your attention tonight, that as Julia and her team have really put their collective foot on the gas, there is a grant opportunity that you will vote on, on the 22nd of this month, but I would like to get the process started, and I'd like to explain the process a little bit to you. So, as you may recall, your recommendations, for example, Recommendation 2 dealt with civilian response for low-risk calls, Recommendation 3, external analysis of police-civilian contacts, 4, civilian response as it relates to mental health calls, 5, we talked a bit about our youth programs, and then 6, lastly, training and the training of officers and what they receive. So with the exception of Item 6, all of those will be done, RFP processes, for the most part, before the end of this fiscal year. I'd like to talk about the first item, which is the million-dollar grant for our nonprofits. And what we have done up to this point, we've engaged not just members of the community input group, but also nonprofits that are in this space throughout the city. In November, we worked with those community groups to identify priorities, and we had two community safety summits with nearly 100 organizations, not people, organizations in attendance, and we released a community safety survey and had about 80 responses. We reconvened this community safety summit group back in January, and basically what rose to the top is support our youth, provide safe and constructive outlets during non-school hours, and demonstrate that there are alternative pathways to violence. So as the group continued to work through this, a few things came out in terms of a framework. One is these intentional decisions, one is a maximum organization budget of $150,000. The sentiment was from the input group is that smaller nonprofits cannot compete with some of the larger organizations. And then also, there was clearly a breakpoint from the community survey in terms of these different sizes of organizations. I would say that there's also an opportunity here that we've created an ecosystem, if you will, and let's start off with the jumpstart grants. Started off at $100,000, made its way up to $500,000, but those jumpstart grants topped out at $5,000. And then there's Unite Charlotte, which is a United Way grant program, which also has grants up to $25,000. For this Safe Charlotte grant, we are looking at a flat $50,000 for 20 organizations. So wherever you are in, I guess, the ecosystem, there are pathways or entry points, but together, we think that this is a better way of proceeding. And what Julia and her team have been able to do is really build something from scratch within a five-month period, and partnering with the United Way to administer the grant, we believe that that's going to help us expedite the process. The United Way has put together a robust package of support for the grantees that includes capacity building by BYE, Bringing You Excellence, which is an MWSBE, and Urban League to develop monthly trainings for the grantees, as well as a data collection evaluation program from UNC Charlotte, and two sessions on data collection and performance. So while I will ask for your approval of the grant to go to the United Way to disperse to these organizations on the 22nd of this month, we would like to get the process and the application process started on the 8th of this month, and that's where I'm coming to you tonight. But two-fold, one, the work has been extremely collaborative, but also exciting to get so much in play over such a short period. They've gone so fast, they've gotten out in front of me a little bit, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but I just wanted to get a nod from you that all of this makes sense, so that we can begin this partnership with the United Way, we can begin the grant application process, but you would approve the million dollars going to the United Way to disperse the entire million dollars, the admin costs will be paid for, not out of the million dollars, but I just wanted to bring you up to speed for that, and hopefully there are no issues for us to move forward. So, Mayor, that's the report that I have as relates to Safe Charlotte. Will take any questions?
Are there questions for the manager?
Ms. Watlington.
Ms. Watlington, you recognized?
I just want to know if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever
Patience and sorry that we're late for technical difficulties. I wanted to call to order the Charlotte City Council's Strategy Session. We have done this Strategy Session in accordance with the electronic laws of round meetings, as well as maintaining the appropriate records. Tonight, we have three items on our agenda. A Safe Charlotte update, and then we have a number of long-term plans that are part of what we are not only doing today, but will have an impact 10 to 20 years out. And then we'll have some Council Committee Report Outs. So I'm going to ask a couple of things. One, the manager is going to do the Safe Charlotte update. I wanted to ask on the item number two, where we're going to talk about the Comprehensive Plan and the Development Ordinance, as well as the Mobility Network, that we allow the staff to go through the presentations, and then just if everybody would get their questions, then we'll open up the floor for questions. We'll start off with the Mobility Plan, which I think is the shortest update, then go to the 2040 Plan, and then the UDO. And then on the Committee Reports, if you'll just think about as Committee Members, what is the most important question that you have for the Committees as they're going through any of the topics that they're going to report out on? So with that, I'm going to have introductions by the Charlotte City Council members first, and then we'll go to the staff in the room. I'm Vi Lyles, and I serve as Mayor, and now we'll start with our City Clerk.
Mr. Johnson, your County Clerk? Patrick Baker, City Attorney. Marcus Jones.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
DeNada Jackson, Office of Constituent Services.
Kay Cunningham, Mayor's Office.
All right, so now, did we do the Council yet? All right, let's start with Mayor Protam.
Mayor Protam Julie Eisel, serving at large.
Happy Monday, Dimple Arch, Mayor of Florida.
Mr. Phipps?
I'm Brett Phipps, at large.
Frackton Winston, at large.
Now, let's start with our District Members.
Markan Eggleston, District 1.
Alcon Graham, District 2.
Troy Watlington, District 3.
Renee Johnson, District 4.
Good evening, Matt Newton, District 5.
Tarek Akari, District 6, also known as the Gateway to Ballentine, in fact.
And here, representing Ballentine, Ed Driggs, District 7.
Okay, we got jokes today, huh? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Mr. Jones, I'm going to turn it over to you for the first Agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor, and Members of Council, and I'll ask Julia Martin to come into 267 as we go through this short presentation. Hello, Julia. I just want the Council to take a look at maybe one of the hardest-working folks that we have on the team. This is one assignment, as you will recall, you approved the Safe Charlotte Plan back in October, and there were six recommendations, and with those six recommendations, I can tell you that we're in a process to have deliverables, all of those, before the end of this fiscal year, June 2021, with one exception, that would be a little bit later. And one of the reasons that I'm bringing this to your attention tonight, that as Julia and her team have really put their foot on the, collected foot on the gas, there is a grant opportunity that you will vote on, on the 22nd of this month, but I would like to get the process started, and I'd like to explain the process a little bit to you. So, as you may recall, your recommendations, for example, Recommendation 2 dealt with Civil, civilian response for low-risk calls, Recommendation 3, external analysis of police, civilian contacts, 4, civilian response as it relates to mental health calls, 5, we talked a bit about our youth programs, and then 6, lastly, training and the training of officers and what they receive. So with the exception of Item 6, all of those will be done, RFP processes, for the most part, before the end of this fiscal year. I'd like to talk about the first item, which is the million-dollar grant for our nonprofits. And what we have done up to this point, we've engaged not just members of the Community Input Group, but also nonprofits that are in this space throughout the city. In November, we worked with those community groups to identify priorities, and we had two community safety summits with nearly 100 organizations, not people, organizations in attendance, and we released a community safety survey and had about 80 responses. We reconvened this community safety summit group back in January, and basically what rose to the top is support our youth, provide safe and constructive outlets during non-school hours, and demonstrate that there are alternative pathways to violence. So as the group continued to work through this, a few things came out in terms of a framework. One is these intentional decisions, one is a maximum organization budget of $150,000. The sentiment was from the input group is that smaller nonprofits cannot compete with some of the larger organizations. And then also, there was clearly a breakpoint from the community survey in terms of these different sizes of organizations. I would say that there's also an opportunity here that we've created an ecosystem, if you will, and let's start off with the Jump Start Grants. Started off at $100,000, made its way up to $500,000, but those Jump Start Grants topped out at $5,000. And then there's Unite Charlotte, which is a United Way Grant Program, which also has grants up to $25,000. For this Safe Charlotte Grant, we are looking at a flat $50,000 for 20 organizations. So wherever you are in, I guess, the ecosystem, there are pathways or entry points, but together, we think that this is a better way of proceeding. And what Julia and her team have been able to do is really build something from scratch within a five-month period, and partnering with the United Way to administer the grant, we believe that that's going to help us expedite the process. The United Way has put together a robust package of support for the grantees that includes capacity building by BYE, Bringing You Excellence, which is an MWSBE, and Urban League to develop monthly trainings for the grantees, as well as a data collection evaluation program from UNC Charlotte, and two sessions on data collection and performance. So while I will ask for your approval of the grant to go to the United Way to disperse to these organizations on the 22nd of this month, we would like to get the process and the application process started on the 8th of this month, and that's where I'm coming to you tonight. At 241, the work has been extremely collaborative, but also exciting to get so much in play over such a short period. They've gone so fast, they've gotten out in front of me a little bit, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but I just wanted to get a nod from you that all of this makes sense, so that we can begin this partnership with the United Way, we can begin the grant application process, but you would approve the million dollars going to the United Way to disperse the entire million dollars, the admin costs will be paid for, not out of the million dollars, but I just wanted to bring you up to speed for that, and hopefully there are no issues for us to move forward. So Mayor, that's the report that I have as relates to Safe Charlotte. Will take any questions?
Are there questions for the manager?
Ms. Watlington.
Ms. Watlington, you recognized?
I just want to know if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team did to move quickly.
Couldn't hear the end of your question, Ms. Watlington. Did we document?
Yeah, if we have benchmarked and documented whatever Julia and team were able to do to move as quickly as they did, is that an opportunity to standardize?
Well, if I understand your question, Councilmember Watlington, we have been thorough in our engagement with the community, as well as making sure that part of this process is to have performance measures and outcomes, so that we will know what we are doing, not just now, but in future years. One other thing that I think is important is that we are utilizing CDBG funds to do this. These will be 501(c)(3) organizations with the concept of sustainability as we go into future years, and not using just the $1 million for this year and be a one-and-done, but to have the sustainability by using the CDBG funds, the 15% set aside in outside years.
Ms. Watlington?
So, that is, what I'm hearing then is it's sustainable, I think that is awesome. In addition to that, I'm wanting to know, from an operations standpoint, how, you don't have to tell me how, what, whatever she and her team did to be able to execute as quickly and efficiently as they did, I'm wondering if that is something that can be benchmarked across the organization?
Oh, great, no, I understand, yes. One of the things that have made this possible, if we had to build this internally with city staff, it would have really slowed us down. Because the United Way has a mechanism in place that can help us in terms of the grant-making, the administration, that helped greatly. And what's also important is, in terms of, well, it's not your question, but I want to make sure that I put this in the room, is that many of the people from the Citizen, Community Input Group will be on the decision-making of who gets the grants.
Thank you, I look forward to seeing the grants.
All right, Mr. Phipps?
Yeah, I guess I was wanting to get clarification, so it's a million, it's a million dollars that would be split between 20 organizations, yet to be selected, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, because I, for some reason, I thought it was just $50,000 split between 20, and that's like, 2,500 bucks wouldn't, I don't know, I don't think that would be, wouldn't make much of an impact, but I'm glad that we're working off that million-dollar number.
All right, Mr. Winston?
Thank you. So full disclosure, I was part of the Selection Committee for the Unite 2 Grant Cycle last year, so I'm familiar with it. This is kind of where my question stemmed from. I know they have a very specific rubric that we, as the selection group, kind of went through, as we considered all of the applicants, but that was a United Ways rubric. I believe that this money, right, if I'm remembering correctly, and this is the money that, like you said, to community nonprofits, that came out of the whole violence interruption discussion, and there was, you know, particular concern there, that, and as we've been building with the community, we've been saying, hey, we hear what you're saying, and we are going to be responsive. My concern is, or my question to the manager is, how do we hold the United Way accountable for distributing this money in a way that meets our particular standards, and not necessarily the United Way's standards, for how we need to interact with these nonprofit groups in our community? Because if this doesn't get done right, and we don't have proper accountability, it's good that it happened fast, but it won't be good that it didn't happen right.
That's an excellent question, Mr. Winston. So, let's not think about the United Way in terms of deciding who gets the grant. Think about the United Way in terms of, we set the parameters of who should be eligible, but then the panel, much like if I'm understanding you being a part of a panel that includes, you know, Tonya Jameson, Don Thomas, Robert Dawkins, Cass Autley, people, Dee Odell, that have been familiar with the work, that panel will decide who is selected for the grants.
So, again, to follow up, that's great, that makes more sense, but still, that panel needs guidance of how to, how to weight the decisions that they're going to have to make, and some of them might be difficult. So, are we leaning on the United Way to come up with that, or are we going to provide that kind of rubric? That needs to be present.
So we will provide that rubric, which is consistent with the priorities of the city, and is consistent with the priorities of the Safe Charlotte Plan.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, just to clarify, is this sort of the next phase of the Micro Grant Program, or is that still out there as well? Is this a different budgetary item in addition to Micro Grant, or is this to replace Micro Grant?
So, right now, Mayor Protam, this is in addition to the Micro Grant Program. So much of that half a million dollars for the Jump Start Program has been allocated throughout the year. There is, I believe, one more cycle of the Jump Start Grant Program, but this is on top of it. As we move forward in FY 2022, that's a, that's a great question that we have in front of us, is there an opportunity to scale one up and maybe one down? Having this Unite Charlotte as another piece of it's important. So I think the concept is meeting organizations where they are, but also being able to scale these organizations up over time with capacity building, using some of the partnerships that are outside of the city.
Okay, thank you. No, that makes sense, and I appreciate it, it sounds like a great program.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? The manager's going to move forward, and so I want to summarize again, you said that this would begin to take, you would have the opening of the grant applications starting March 8, which is next Monday, and that you're hoping to get it up and running, using with United Way and the Urban League and several other folks on capacity building, data analytics, and regulatory work. And then I wanted to just make sure, and this is coming out of the 15% allocation from Community Development Block Funds, that we ordinarily use every year for these kinds of human service purposes, and because of our safe communities, this is what we're going to do as a high priority.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Phipps?
Yeah, I was just wondering, okay, so we set parameters of what kind of expectations we want to see from the work that these nonprofits are doing, so we got to, I mean, how do we measure success on any of these efforts? I mean, have we set that up? I mean, because, you know, crime prevention and avoidance can be, you know, very frustrating, difficult kind of thing, so how do we intend to measure success on a go-forward basis with these expenditures?
So thank you, Mr. Phipps. I believe, I guess, the best way to respond to this is much like one of the responses that I had for Cure Violence, or the Hospital Interrupter Program, it is, you take them together, right? So for instance, we haven't launched any of the programs for the Safe Charlotte Plan yet, the six recommendations, but we're on the way. And so I guess your next question would be, well, tell me where we are with violent crime today. And none of these programs, none of the recommendations can help us with that, because we haven't implemented. But what we are doing specifically with these programs are bringing in partners like UNC Charlotte, bringing in partners like the United Way or the Urban League, because what has been, I guess, different in the past is, one, measure what's going on, but secondly, give these organizations additional support, so that they can be successful in their operations. So the metrics will be a part of each program, but again, too early to say what the impact is, because we haven't launched them.
So I'm going to follow up with Mr. Phipps. I would hope that as we make these awards and people begin down a path, if we have to stop and re-sharpen or refocus, that that doesn't happen after 12 months of work, that we're actually building capacity, which means oftentimes the ability to come in and say, we need to make a change here, sharpen your focus here, redesign something, reposition something. So as long as we're monitoring carefully, and I think that that was one of the workflows paths that you have, so with that, any other questions? I see none others, so thanks, everyone. Mr. Jones, I think you're ready to go. Very much appreciate the work that everybody's doing. Okay, so the next item on our agenda are three items, and we're going to start with a continuous, the manager, on the Mobility Network Update. And then we'll go to Taiwo for the Comprehensive Plan and the UDO, I believe. So, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, and I should have said with the last presentation, just thank you, Council, for giving us an opportunity to just move forward and move fast, but also to do it in a way that we're making sure that we're making good investments. So again, I thank you for providing us the opportunity to do this. So what we have today on, I guess, the last item before we get to the Community, excuse me, the City Council Report Outs, is what I would say, what we attempted to do on the second day of the annual Strategy Meeting, and that was to show how the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the UDO, and the Transformational Mobility Network, back then we called it Charlotte Moves, actually all worked together. So in reverse order, I'm going to do the, it's not even a presentation, but just a little bit of an update on the Transformational Mobility Network. And the last time we spoke about this was at the last Strategy Session, and we're geared up to talk with you again on the 22nd of this month. I will tell you that transitioning from the task force work to staff analysis is just not a simple task, because where the task force was setting a vision at a very high level, now it's up to the staff to take a look at how the legislation could and should be drafted, as well as a financial plan. So we are refining our legislative ask, and also refining the financial assumptions. We are trying to flesh this out with confidence, so that we know that the numbers that we placed before you are good numbers, and we are assembling a strong bench of partners. We have mobility infrastructure experts, legal advisors, and local partners such as the Charlotte Alliance. So we've been getting a number of questions, and it's clear there are a number of questions and concerns, and voiced by particular stakeholders, and we're taking that feedback as we begin to do more analysis. But again, the concept for us, we're still doing the work, bringing in partners, and we would come back at the 22nd of this month with more information for you regarding the legislation and the refining the financial assumption. So that is without slides, Mayor, but just a very, very quick update before I turn it over to Tai.
Okay, so jot down your questions if you have any for Mr. Jones, and we're going to turn it over.
So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, and thank you very much also for your support of us on this work, which we started just a little over two years ago, on the Charlotte Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The Unified Development Ordinance obviously started way before then. So tonight, though, we were not asking for any action, this is really more of an informational update on those two items, to update you on where we are with the project, but also to share further details with you with regard to some of the comments and concerns that we've been hearing from the community, so we're able to answer questions and also take your comments. So I will just lead off with a few things with regards to the engagement, and then I'll turn it over to our Comprehensive Plan Project Manager, Alicia Housman, to kind of work through the details, then we'll pause, and take questions and comments that you may have on the Charlotte Future 2040, before we move into the Unified Development Ordinance. Because the two of them are really closely tied, it's likely that some of your questions, after the Comprehensive Plan, may actually border on the UDO. So when we get to that point, we'll let you know, so we may want to move some of those questions forward. Next slide, okay. So over the past two years plus, we have engaged broadly and widely, in my experience in Comprehensive Plan, and I think I have about seven different Comprehensive Plans that I've worked on throughout the United States, this is probably the most robust engagement that I have been part of. It has really covered not only our council districts, but including areas in the extraterritorial jurisdictions that we have. We've piggybacked on counties' MEK playbook engagement meetings, we've piggybacked on the Charlotte 2040 Center City Plan, just whatever opportunities have been out there, we've actually really tacked in with a number of our partners to make sure that we're there, receiving information, taking in comments, and most of those, obviously, have been processed, and they result in what we have in front of us today. Yeah, it's a 320-page document, but that's really because this is the first time we'll be doing something like this in the spirit of the Comprehensive Plan that was developed back in 1975. And so about 45 years, I think we know, we knew going into this that it was going to be more of a lot of touchpoints with our constituents and residents and businesspeople, but to get us to a point where we have this document, it's 320 pages in all, but only 170 pages really cover the policy framework, division, the values, and a lot of graphics in there, and you have a place types manual in that document as well, that really answers a lot of questions with regards to place types. Most of the document itself, like I said, is very graphically, visually pleasing, and so we continue to encourage everyone to go through it. But COVID-19 hit us in early 2020, and we've had to move to virtual engagement since then, until the draft plan was released back in October of 2020, where we have over 500 people in attendance. Okay, keep having some challenge with moving this. All right, so the number that I want to focus on on this slide is actually the key stakeholders. One of the focus of our engagement from the very start, and especially since we moved into the virtual space, is the nearly 500 advisors and ambassadors who have actually met monthly to help put this plan together. Page 185, 85 of the plan actually acknowledges these individuals and lists them out there. And these are not just residents of our city from each council district, but they also represent the home building and real estate industries. We've actually met with the RIBIC, NAOP leadership multiple times, probably more than any other group that we've met with in the city over the last two years, and nearly 10 individuals representing the development industry, both leadership and members actually volunteered to be members of that nearly 500 key stakeholders in the last two years. And we're actually having another meeting tomorrow with NAOP and RIBIC as well. I will pause here to just quickly highlight some of the concerns we've had from them with regards to the plan. There have been concerns, obviously, about community benefit agreements, and how it will work, whether it's a potential for losing predictability in permitting, or even getting raw lease approval for inclusionary zoning in the document. Yes, a Comprehensive Plan by nature is a big-picture document, it's a 20-year plan, that there are things in the document that may not be doable today, but because you do not want a Comprehensive Plan to be developed and updated every two years, you put a lot of things in there and... of things in there in anticipation of what may happen. So it's aspirational, it's visionary. But there are certain aspects of it that are also pragmatic, that you know that you can actually take care of today. So we've had, you know, how do we provide comments? We're going to talk about that during this presentation, and whether there will be other drafts. But I have said that the way the process works is that all the comments will be received until March 22nd, when we have public hearing. And rather than have a piece with responses to comments, we're going to respond all at one time, so that we were touching everything and everyone in the process. Yes, we've had complaints and concerns, obviously, comments that the document is very big. Like I said, it's a 320-page document, but it's really very easy to read, because about, most of it is graphics and appendices. The main documents that deal with policies are only less than, actually, less than 50 pages total in the document. So there's a lot of comments that we've had, not just from the home builders and development industry, but from our residents. You know, unlike all of those comments, the way we are looking at them is, let's put all of them together. But I will tell you that most of the comments have been very positive. I would say very, very positive about the plan, and that there have been more questions actually than comments. And we expected that, again, going into this, knowing fully well that this is the first time we'll be experiencing a cohesive citywide plan of this nature. And all of those, we're responding to them. I believe last Monday, when we presented to the Transportation Planning and Environmental Committee, we had about 250 comments, as that today we have over 300 of them. And again, we continue to take them, receive them, and some of them are questions, like I said, and we'll be responding to them over time. Now, I noticed a large document, and I've made reference to that, and people have a lot of other priorities. Definitely, the comprehensive plan is not the only thing people are thinking about when they, you know, when they're doing their daily businesses. And unlike us, who live with this every day, we definitely expected that a lot of people will still need opportunity to navigate through this. Initially, our initial schedule was that we were going to release a public draft back in September of 2020 and bring it to council for adoption in December of 2020. But once COVID-19 hit us, we felt that we needed to pivot and make a release of the plan in October and provide a five-to-six month timeframe from that period through spring for people to still be able to review it, whether people are seeing it for the first time, or they are reviewing it for the first time, or they've not been part of the process. The goal was to have people have enough time for folks. So we created 40 or more different ways to connect with our residents throughout the city, because we know that, again, it's a big document. Navigating through it would be a challenge, and so we wanted to provide different ways by which people could engage. And so we'll continue to ask people, I think you remember that we had the board games that went throughout the entire city, probably met with many homeowners associations to look through this as well. But we do know that because we're now getting to a point where we're going to be asking for council to adopt this, and people are seeing this for the first time, some people are seeing this for the first time, it's very important to build that five-month period. So these are the different ways by which we've engaged people, and we really want to continue to encourage people to send us comments. We have a public hearing hopefully on March 22nd. We think that that will be another opportunity for us to receive more comments and then be able to respond to them and share our response. First, with TAC Committee, and then ultimately with council. So today's presentation that Alicia will give will focus on one of the plan goals regarding housing diversity. We've had that that's probably the one goal that attracted a lot of comments and questions, and we're going to speak to that today. Further, we've also heard from you, council members, and some members of the community, how they place types and the Unified Development Ordinance regulations, how they will work together. So we're going to kind of walk through this together today, and I am not guarantee you that you will not have questions out. I'm sure you will have a lot of them. But we just want to make sure that we answer those two in terms of housing diversity, and also how the place types connect with the UDO. So at this point, I'll go ahead and hand off to Ms. Husband to take us through the rest of the presentation on the comprehensive plan, and then we'll both be back to answer questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Taiwo, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Manager and Council for the opportunity to share about the plan. As Tai mentioned, the planning process started in 2018, and here's how it lays out. In October, we released a document to the public and started that six-month review process, and we are currently three months into that and receiving comments, actually just doing more listening than we are trying to respond, but making sure that we hear people, answer their questions, and provide various ways for them to share their thoughts, concerns, and their questions with staff. And so that all leads to a tentative adoption date in April. In March of this month, we will have a public hearing on the 22nd, and that all leads to the tentative April adoption date. As Tai mentioned, there are various ways for our residents, including staff and our elected and appointed officials, to share their comments about the plan. This was really important to have various ways, because, one, because of COVID, but also to meet people where they are with their comfortable, level of comfortability with technology. So you can use the e-plan, the electronic document, and actually comment directly onto the plan. You can email us or provide your comments directly using our website. And for those who might be visually impaired, you can call 311 and to leave your comments over the phone. As I mentioned, we have over three comments received today. The comments are available on our website, cltfuture2040.com, and the population, the spreadsheet updates every five minutes. So what you see before you are just a snapshot in time of the comments we've received to date. Many of them are received via email directly to staff, sharing their comments, or online within the document. The public has really been vocal in sharing their comments, as you know, but also staff and our elected officials have comments that they're sharing as well as we go through the process. So here are the types of comments that we're receiving. General is the plan document, but we're also getting those very detailed comments about grammar and graphics and those types of things. So as we're proposing revisions to the document, we'll have a general statement that takes care of those grammatical or graphic errors that we may have. But I'll walk through some of the general comments or comments that we're receiving directly on the plan. So the plan is divided into five sections. The most comments that we are receiving are about the policy framework. That's where the 10 plan goals live around neighborhoods, jobs, open space, those types of things. That's where we're getting most of our comments. The next area of, that's receiving more comments is on the Complete Community and Places area of the section of the plan, and that's where the place types are. And so folks are really asking, how will this work, and those types of things, and I'll run through those comments later. Implementation strategy is also where we're getting a lot of comments. How will this plan work? Again, to Tai's point, we haven't had one in almost 50 years, and so there's a lot of question about the mechanics of what happens once the plan is adopted, how it will relate to the Unified Development Ordinance, and then where does community area planning fit into this process as well. So the next couple of slides have more words than I particularly like to have on a slide, but I wanted to give you a snapshot of what we're hearing from the community based on each section of the plan. So the first section really is a community-based vision, and there are comments that are pushing us, saying we didn't go far enough in establishing the vision. How might we be more intentional in defining equity in our definitions, since equity is a common theme throughout the plan? Let's be really bold about how we express what that means for Charlotte. And then also creating some language around equitable growth. As we're creating a transformative mobility network, how might we be more intentional about making sure that equity is a, is a front and center theme in creating that mobility network? The other section, Complete Communities and Places, again, this is where the place types live. And the big question about that is, what is this? How will it work, and how does it relate to the UDO? And so hopefully, in the next weeks to come, and definitely in this presentation, we'll share with you all how that might work and how the plan will connect to the UDO in implementation. Again, the policy framework section, many of the comments are around, to what you guys are receiving, comments about the single-family neighborhoods. How does the plan address that? And we'll talk more detail about that a little later. But then, how are we paying for this plan? There's been some questions about the finances and how we thinking about being fiscally responsible with this plan as we grow. How are we paying for and accommodating for that growth in the future? Again, questions about displacement. A lot of our residents are concerned about, as we grow, how does this plan speak to mitigating displacement and really putting numbers to the narrative about our vulnerable populations, and how do we plan to address that moving forward? The implementation strategy, a lot of the comments, again, were about place type mapping, UDO. And then there were really concerns about how will the community planning process work in the future, because this plan does make some really bold recommendations about making sure we improve our processes to be more transparent and predictable for our residents. So some questions around the mechanics of that, and in the future phases of plan implementation, we'll address those concerns about the community area planning approach. So I wanted to stop for a minute and just focus on the 10 plan goals, particularly the one around neighborhood diversity inclusion. As Tai mentioned, you all have been receiving a lot of comments about this one. And what I want to say, what the plan really seeks to do, we're committed to preserving and protecting our vibrant communities. Many of these goals support those, support our neighborhoods, our businesses, so everyone in Charlotte can have a vibrant place to live, work, and play. So these are the 10 plan goals that speak to that. The one that we want to focus on in the next series of slides is around neighborhood diversity, what is in the plan and what's not in the plan. So the language that is actually in the plan, and I want to be clear to say that the plan is a policy document. It does not change the zoning, nor does it encourage tear down or elimination of single-family homes. However, the plan does provide policy direction to remove barriers to creating more diverse and inclusive neighborhoods throughout our entire community. And so some of the ways that the plan seeks to do that is to allow more housing types within our single-family neighborhoods, but not just carte blanche, but to provide some specific dimensional development standards around how that might happen in the future. Laurel can, will speak a little bit to that, but I'll show some illustrations to talk about how that might happen. So duplexes, triplexes, and quads are some of the new development, I mean, the new housing types that we would like to see provided equitably or throughout the entire community. And that's what the plan actually speaks to. So why is diversity important? It offers a range of building types throughout our neighborhoods, increases the opportunity for affordable housing option. It doesn't ensure, but it provides more of an opportunity for that. And then it allows some of our residents to age in place as we get older in our community. Should you live in a single-family home, you might want to stay in that neighborhood, and having housing options would allow you to do that. So that's just an example of how diversity could work and why it's important to our communities moving forward. So this, this series of maps shows where our plex housing or duplexes, triplexes, and quads are today. On the left, there are currently 5,600 units citywide, but only a third of those were built in the 1950s. And as you can see, the next two maps are by decade, and we have not built, we haven't built as much of that housing diversity since the 1950s, or, and definitely not in the past decade or so. And so what we heard overwhelmingly from our community, particularly our ambassadors and strategic advisors, is that, you know, as we grow as a community, we need to have more housing options, more than just single-family homes and apartments. How do we address in this plan that missing middle density or housing options moving forward? So how might that work? And I'll just briefly talk about kind of the development part of it. So the plan introduces the mix of building types, which you see on the left. The ordinance will provide guidance on dimensional standards that should redevelopment or new development happens. What might that look like in terms of the width of the building, the height of the building? And as you can see in the picture, what is proposed is that if there is a tear down, for an example, that what comes in as new development will look and feel like the rest of the neighborhood. So it will be built in consistent with the character. And also, another thing to point out is that as we introduce in these housing types, that there will be one driveway proposed for these units, as well as no parking in the front yards. So I wanted to shift to talk a little bit about the path forward and how we're continuing to engage the community. Again, engagement doesn't stop with this process, nor does it stop after the plan's adopted. So next week, we will hear from Paul, Charles Hales, who's the former mayor of Portland, to share his experience with comprehensive planning, and definitely Portland has a lot of the elements that we're thinking about in this plan. So join us for that. This is a three, part of a three-part series to hear from experts around the country. Also, we will host a citywide community conversation in a town hall style meeting, not necessarily a town hall, but a town hall style meeting on March 16th, offering two times, one for our lunchtime residents and business owners and our residents from at 12 o'clock, and then again at 5:30. And that is available on our YouTube channel, Gov channel, and our Facebook pages. And right now, I wanted to share a video that talks about really next steps and how the plan will work.
Charlotte is America's queen city, a diverse community that continues to experience rapid growth. Yet, many communities in Charlotte have not enjoyed the benefits of thoughtful planning. Without a citywide plan for growth, these communities are often passed over for valuable investments and policy support, creating inequities and a lack of balance. The Charlotte Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan is taking a new, community-driven approach to guiding growth in all of Charlotte's communities by focusing on 10 types of places unique to Charlotte. Planning the right mix of place types so all areas of Charlotte have a variety of places to live, work, and play can help us ensure equitable growth over time. Input from diverse communities has helped us prioritize access to quality housing, employment, services, and amenities for all residents. So what happens next? We need as many people like you to provide feedback on the draft plan. A plan including community comments will be adopted by city council. The community will share their vision, improving existing places or new places in their neighborhoods by mapping the place types. While the community is mapping place types, the city will be finalizing the Unified Development Ordinance will apply to individual parcels within a given place, and will be following up to ensure that all of Charlotte has a voice in deciding what types of investments their area needs. The success of this plan relies on you. Your input and feedback can still help shape the plan and its implementation. Advancing equity and breaking down barriers to opportunity is essential for all of our communities to thrive. We are living in historic times, and now is the time to work together for a more inclusive and sustainable future. The city of Charlotte is committed to implementing a 2040 Comprehensive Plan that is inclusive of feedback from all Charlotte residents. You're invited to join us and engage in a deeper understanding of how the plan will shape Charlotte's future. Visit cltfuture2040.com to learn more.
All right. Okay, so, sorry, Council. So we're going to go right into the UDO. Who's doing the UDO?
Laura.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pratim and Council. I'm Laura Harmon with the Planning Department, and I am managing the Unified Development Ordinance and want to give you guys an update on where we are. It's been a while since we've been here. So a little bit about, a reminder of why we're doing this, again, since it's been a while since we've been here. The U D O is our primary regulatory tool for implementing the Comprehensive Plan and a number of other policies that you all have adopted. So we think it's really important to get it in place to help move forward with development consistent with your vision for the community, and our community's vision for the community. We also want to have development regulations that provide greater flexibility for future development, I mean, excuse me, predictability, as well as flexibility, but so that it is clear to everyone to have a good solid set of standards that are worked together, that are aligned together, and that everyone can have access to and understand to see what the development regulations will be for our community. We also are working to include best practices and revised development standards. If you're familiar with our regulations, you may know that our zoning ordinance has not been comprehensively updated for almost 30 years. A lot has changed in the way that communities develop. And the Unified Development Ordinance will have updated zoning regulations, as well as a number of regulations that include those best practices. We also want to get all of our development regulations that the city manages anyway into a single document, and then group the regulations so that they're easy to find. So if you're looking for something related to streets, it's easy to go to one chapter of the U D O and find the regulations related to streets. It's a little bit more challenging with the way things are set up now with our regulations. And then we want a more user-friendly document to simplify terms, to use common language across many areas of the ordinance, increased use of graphics. And finally, we want an ordinance that complies with the updated planning legislation in North Carolina 160D. So the connection again between the vision, mostly through the Conference of Plan, but through other council-adopted policies as well, is really important with the implementation coming through the U D O. And you can see that we're taking regulations that are in nine different pla, or excuse me, eight different places right now, and putting them into one unified development ordinance. And zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, trees, streets and sidewalk, stormwater, floodplain, erosion control, and driveway and access regulations are all in different places right now. They will all be in the Unified Development Ordinance as we complete this. What you can expect to see when you see the Unified Development Ordinance, the way it will be organized is shown on this screen. Obviously have the introductory provisions, but three major substantive components, the zoning piece, subdivision streets and infrastructure, stormwater and natural resources, and then we will have a chapter on administration and approval of plans. Where are we now? As you know, in the past, we've brought to you all a number of items that were kind of previews to the full U D O. The new TOD districts, and we've actually even updated them once based on what we've learned, new sign regulations, and updated those as well, and an update for the tree ordinance for urban sites. And we've also done with you all a rezoning for the TOD zoning and align that on the ground. We're now in the middle of actually developing the full U D O. We've drafted, or drafting the document. We drafted many components, coming to you all periodically in our Planning Commission with updates, and working closely with an ordinance advisory committee review. We will be moving into community engagement soon and the adoption process. And then after that, we'll move into implementation of the U D O with a number of items, including how we get from the current zoning that we have to new zoning districts in the future, and how we educate and train people on what the new regulations are. We're not doing this alone. This is not just a Planning Department initiative, but we're working with Camiras, who is our lead consultant, and I actually have Arista Strungis with us tonight in case we have detailed questions on some of the regulations that we'll be talking about. And they also have a subconsultant, Parker Poe, who is working with our attorney's office and will be providing legal support and review of the U D O. Again, this is not just a Planning Department effort, but a number of other agencies within the city, as well as a couple of agencies within the county are working very busily on putting the U D O together, working with our consultant. They're providing input, review of sections of the ordinance. They will be working in community engagement as well, particularly with different groups' expertise, and through the adoption and implementation process. We also, as I mentioned earlier, have an ordinance advisory committee of 30-plus volunteer community members. They have been with us for, a number of them, for actually a few years now. And they are neighborhood representatives, people representing sustainability interests, and also folks from the design and development sector. So a wide range of perspectives. We wanted to hear from folks with different interests and different areas of expertise. We are taking different components to them. They're giving us advice and feedback as we take components of the U D O, and then we're using that to make adjustments and updates to those different components. Since the adoption of the TOD districts in April of 2019, just to give you an idea of the number of times we have been met with them, we've had 18 regular ordinance advisory committee meetings, three optional drop-in meetings, and before the release of the first draft, we anticipate seven more meetings. So this has been a very active and engaged group, and they've provided us a lot of very helpful feedback, and we will continue to get feedback from them. So moving a little bit now into what we actually have been working on within the U D O, we wanted to give you guys an example of how the U D O and the Conference of Plan and the place types component of the Conference of Plan work together. And as Alicia talked about our neighborhoods, we want to talk to you all about how those are showing up. The policies and place types are showing up in our regulations for the U D O. So we have, as we've been developing the U D O, first looked at the policy from the Comprehensive Plan, and then specific place types as we're developing our zoning districts, and then are producing regulations that we think reflect what is in the policy, reflect and interpret the policy and the place types. So tonight, want to talk, we'll actually focus on the Neighborhood 1 area and talk through, at a high level, the regulations, the proposed zoning districts that we'll have for Neighborhood 1, at least as currently written. So again, the Neighborhood 1 zoning districts policy is to have a mix of single-family residential and low-density multifamily, and that's coming straight from the Conference of Plan. And then as we look at the regulations, we've developed six base districts and three overlay districts to help implement that. The base districts are mostly translations and updates based on the policy of our current residential districts, our lower intensity residential districts, R3, R4, R5, R6, and R8. We're also kind of reworking our urban residential, lower-intensity urban residential districts, and we're adding a new district, N1F, which is our smaller projects for townhomes or multifamily and arterials designed to be built into the neighborhood context. And then we have three overlay districts, and I'll talk about each of those as well. So the first five districts, we're calling them N1 for Neighborhood 1, place type, N1A, B, C, D, and E, are based off of, again, the land use proposals out of the Neighborhood 1 place types, primarily single-family detached areas, but also accommodating accessory dwelling units or ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, and some smaller commercial buildings. So again, how does that translate into zoning? These districts would allow single-family duplex and triplex dwellings on any lot in the district. So as long as you meet the lot standards, the size of the lot, the width of the lot, and so forth, in any of these districts, you could place a single-family home, a duplex, or a triplex on one of those lots. There would also be quadruplexes allowed on arterials when an affordable housing unit is provided under certain conditions, many conditions, accessory dwelling units would be allowed. These districts would also allow your civic and institutional uses, such as schools, religious institutions, and parks. And then we have a provision for our neighborhood commercial establishments that you find in a few of our in-town neighborhoods, already existing buildings, maybe were built close to 100 years ago for commercial. We want to accommodate those remaining. As you look at these districts, you will find that the building envelope, which is really the setback from the front, on the sides, and the rear, as well as the height, sets that envelope for where a housing structure can be built, is very similar to what we have today, and is the same regardless of what type of housing you put on that lot. And we also have some building coverage standards that are essentially what we have today as well, and applied to any type of housing that goes on the lot. Another district, the N1F district, is where we would allow small-scale townhome and multifamily, again, responding to the place type policy and designed to provide additional housing choices in our neighborhoods. These would primarily be allowed on arterials, or as you may be more used to hearing them, thoroughfares or major streets. We would allow either townhomes or multifamily attached, which is side-by-side housing, or multifamily stacked, which is your more traditional housing, one unit above another, and limit the number of buildings that you can have in one of these developments. So we're not looking for large-scale multifamily developments in the N1 area, but we are looking for more diversity in small-scale developments. And you can see an example on the left on this picture of where we have this. I believe this is in one of our in-town neighbors, this may be Elizabeth, but where you can, we're starting to try to accommodate the pattern that you see in a lot of our current in-town neighborhoods. This district would include onsite open space, and again, typically located along those thoroughfares or arterials. We also, as we have in our current ordinance, have some options for alternative ways to design a site. So you have a base set of standards, but then you have an alternative approach that you can use. The first is what we're calling conservation development, which is kind of reworking our current cluster development standards, if by chance you're familiar with those. And this is designed so that you can place buildings differently. You might have smaller lots, but in exchange for that, you're providing additional open space or, and actually tree save on the site. So you're saving those important environmental elements on the site, but you can then lay out your site differently with smaller lots. Mixed income bonus is another item that we have in here. You may be familiar that we have something in our ordinance now, but have had some trouble because it has been very limited in where it could be applied. We're proposing that this be allowed throughout our community, that you can go up one zoning district as far as percentage of lots. If you have additional, 50% of the additional units allowed, there's actually, I think, lots as well, would be a bonus to be set aside for households earning 70% or less of the area median income. So we're really trying to provide incentives for providing, in this case, an affordable housing component. So you get to do a little bit more development with this, but we also have an affordable housing component that would come with that additional development. And then just headed to a very high level, some overlay districts. These would, to be applied, actually come through a rezoning that came to council for decision. So you might have a base district, and someone says, you know, I want to do something a little bit different than what is allowed in the base district, or for the second to the neighborhood may say, we want some slightly different standards. So the first is the cottage court overlay, which is typically where development occurs around the central green space. And we have some different standards for this, where 50% of the size of lots, the new lots could be 50% of the size in the base district. So you could have, again, smaller lots, but again, with that open space, a lot more flexibility in how you design as long as you place those dwellings on a common open space or public street. Then we have a residential infill overlay district designed to ensure or promote character of new development, being compatible with what already exists in an established neighborhood. So this would facilitate compatible residential infill, designed to be applied within Route 4, or effectively four miles from the center of town, so it's our in-town neighborhoods, and to maintain and complement that existing pattern through controls, additional controls on height and dwelling unit size. And then finally, we have a neighborhood character overlay district, which is intended to allow for the creation of standards that are unique to neighborhoods. So if you have a neighborhood that has a certain character, say, maybe all of the lots have greater setbacks than what we're providing in the ordinance, or all of the homes are single-story, you could come in and use this district through the development of a plan that staff would work on and then bring to council. And then, once the overlay is applied, that plan would have regulatory standards, and that would be unique to each neighborhood. Not to get into detail on this, but we have also worked extensively on mixed-use and non-residential zoning districts that apply to place types. And you can see we have, for these place types, at least one zoning district, and frequently more than one to implement the different mixed-use and non-residential place types. And finally, you'll be seeing overlay, additional overlay and special purpose districts, the historic district overlay, which exists now and really is just being cleaned up, as well as the airport noise disclosure overlay, same thing, exists now, just tweaking the language, and then a couple of districts for manufactured housing. So where we are now, we're actually in Phase 2, working on completing, drafting the U D O. O A C meetings coming to council and Planning Commission. We'll be moving soon into Phase 3, which is really the point at which we will be releasing the public draft near the end of May. We'll be continuing to talk to the ordinance advisory committee and to you all in the Planning Commission. Then, as currently scheduled, we move into Phase 4, where we're going to the public once we've released that draft, having conversations, public review, getting feedback from the community. We'll continue to talk with the ordinance advisory committee, especially as we get feedback from the community and are thinking of potential changes to the ordinance, and are looking at releasing a public hearing draft in August, and then coming in September and October through the public hearing process, taking it to the Planning Committee of the Planning Commission for Recommendation, Transportation, and Transportation. and Planning Environment Committee for recommendation, adjusting the UDO as necessary and requesting adoption from City Council in the latter part of October. After the adoption of the UDO, this doesn't end. We will actually have a fair amount of training, both with internal and external users, as well as sessions with City Council, as you all would request, in order to get to, continue to inform you about what's going on with the UDO, provide more detailed information as necessary. We will be translating our current conventional zoning that is on the ground to the new zoning districts. And then, after that, we'll be looking at, what is the zoning pattern, and how does that align with the place type mapping, and do we need to do additional alignment rezonings like we did for transit-oriented development?
All right. So, my understanding, we're going to go in order so that people will be able to address the questions. So, first-
Can't, we can't hear you, Mayor.
Sorry. I wanted to just say that we're going to go in the order of the announcements for the questions for the plan and the order that they came. So, the first set of questions are for the mobility plan. Do you have, do we have people, and then we'll go to the next set on the UDO, I'm sorry, the 2040 plan, and then the UDO will be the last set of comments. And I know it might be difficult, because I think what the manager said is, we are trying to knit these all together, but I'm also trying to make sure everybody gets the opportunity to comment. So, I think if we do it this way, if it overlaps, I'll try to get it back to where we are. But the first set of questions, let's go to the mobility plan from council.
So, council, if you all can help me out by lowering your hands and then putting them back up if you want to speak on the mobility plan.
All right, Ms., nope. I don't think we have any, I don't know if we can go from the slide so I can see the council members.
Ms. Watlington has a question.
Oh, Ms. Watlington. You're recognized for a question on mobility.
Do you really mean mobility?
Yes, I mean, the first report that the manager gave on the mobility plan, yes, transportation on mobility network, yes?
Okay, I'm waiting on the comprehensive plan, and sorry.
Okay, so I don't think there are any, Ms. Ashmira.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions on the mobility plan, since we were given an update on that last. I know there were conversations that were occurring with Norfolk. Has there been any update on that since our last update?
No.
So, we continue to have these conversations. So, let me tell you, the first conversation, we had an MTC meeting, again, once again, confirming that the red line to the northern towns is still a very important issue. And I have talked with the mayors of the six towns in Mecklenburg County and asked them to help us do this. I think it was kind of assumed that the responsibility for getting the red line rested with Charlotte. And what I've pointed out to them, that the power of collective countywide political effort, as well as staff effort, would be much more effective, and every one of the mayors have agreed to that effort. So, that's the biggest, the latest update on the red line.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, on that update. Yes, it is going to take all of us, including the towns, working together to really get the red line moving forward. I did have a conversation earlier today with Mr. Bill Russell, with Lake Norman Chamber of Commerce. He had sent us, he had sent us a letter, and there were several concerns that he had raised in my meeting with him, where the concerns have been around having North Mecklenburg's input on how their tax dollars are being spent, and really having a seat at the table. And he'd expressed concerns that that has not been the case. So, I want, I'm trying to understand what we have, what have we done, if there is a plan to ensure that they can also have a seat at the table, we are incorporating their inputs in how North Mecklenburg tax dollars are being spent. Suddenly, he emphasized the point where they wanted to see more money being spent on building roads and so on, as they are seeing more traffic and congestion. So, I just wanted to get an update on what has been our approach and how we can address the concern that he has raised.
So, Ms. Ashmira, I have replied to the Lake Norman Chamber and have asked for a meeting, but let me just, we have a contractual agreement on how the monies are funded and raised. That's what the Metropolitan Transportation Committee does. Everyone has an equal vote in that committee, and every mayor has one vote, and then the county commission has one vote. So, the allocation of all of the transit funding for the last 20 years have been approved by everyone that's on the MTC. And so, I think that what he often refers to is, on the issue of roads, you have a different agency that's required by the federal government for roads, that then comes down to a regional plan, which the city of Charlotte has representation on, which is the Transportation Coordinating Committee. So, on the MTC, I just want to make sure, our agreement is that we have the MTC, and every mayor has an equal vote, and every representative of the towns has an equal vote with the city of Charlotte, as well as Mecklenburg County. But on the roadside, that comes from the state. You have to meet state requirements and federal requirements, and that's a much more complicated process, because it requires federal funding for roads and highways, as well as state funding. So, I think he has two points that he was making, and I would say that those two definitions of how that works are separate. And for our sales tax for transit, everybody has had an equal vote for the 20 years that the tax has been collected. All right, I have, I'm sorry, Ms. Ashmira, do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. So, I appreciate an update on that. So, I understand how MTC works. I guess the mobility plan that city had designed and now seeking input from North Mecklenburg and other smaller towns, I'm trying to understand the efforts there. And if we have engaged North Mecklenburg to really provide their input on how the tax dollars are being spent, their tax dollars are being spent. And really, the concern is, it's bigger here, where they feel they don't have a voice at the table, and the plan has been something that has come from the city of Charlotte without any input from them. And I think that's a valid concern that they have, that I think we need to address.
I agree. I think that is very much a concern. But as we were treated all equally, there were representatives from across the county on the group that made the recommendation for the projects or the plan that we have now. And that plan came from a citizens advisory group to the council, and then, I believe, the staff took it everywhere. And we've been in every town and the county commission to discuss it. I have regular communications with each mayor on a regular basis, often on weekends and nights, to talk about issues with the plan. So, I would say that I can understand that, but I think that Charlotte has not been treated any differently, or at least I was not treated any differently than any other mayor. We have people from across the county, representative, representative in the Charlotte moves effort. But I also think that we made, we stumbled. We stumbled when we said Charlotte moves. We stumbled when we shouldn't have made some of our languaging more inclusive. So, I agree with that. It is a valid concern, and I can understand that very much. And I think that we are working very hard, that we are now meeting on a regular basis with the mayors, the manager meets with the managers, and the planning directors meet with the planning directors. Nothing's perfect, and we're doing our very best. And I think that we are making headways on it in terms of this. Again, I say that all, the governance structure for the use of the sales tax money has not changed, and is not proposed to change. And so, the use of the funding will be in agreement by the eight members, voting members of the MTC. It's really interesting, we had a meeting, and someone asked me, "Well, how is the train going to get to Concord or Belmont?" And I said, "Well, they would have to pay their own way." And some people just assumed that the Mecklenburg County folks would be willing to pay to go outside of the county, which, you know, I guess it was just my budget numbers hit, saying I'd never do that. But it was a question. So, sometimes we're just not really, we make some assumptions, and what we have to do is be much more concise and much more definitive, and we're working hard on doing that. All right. Ms. Ashmira, or Mr. Driggs?
Yes, I'm good on the mobility. I appreciate your response, and I will wait to ask my questions on the 2040 plan.
All right, Mr. Driggs, on mobility.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment in regard to the last question, that the fact that the person objecting to the plan is in the minority as far as the CARPO is concerned. We were talking about needing to consolidate support for this plan in order to improve our chances of getting it accepted in Raleigh, and that we wanted to rally everybody around. So, I don't think it's at all irrelevant to point out that there are people, as part of that organization, who are stakeholders and aren't happy. And I think we need to give proper consideration for the purposes of our promotion of the plan to input from everybody, and not just disenfranchise people who happen to be in the majority on that body. My question is for Mr. Jones. I assume that we're proceeding now in the mobility plan on the assumption that we will not be able to have a referendum until next year. Is that right?
So, Mr. Driggs, yes, we are proceeding as if, well, let's back up a little bit. So, we're continuing to go along, plug along with this. As we've talked to legal advisors, there are ways to have a referendum in 2021, as well as 2022 or later. So, until we have a fatal flaw in any draft of legislation that would suggest that this could not happen, we will continue to use our internal attorneys, as well as our outside attorneys, as we draft legislation.
Well, I would just comment on that. I think the idea of trying to do a referendum absent in any other major election may be technically legal, but is a very questionable way to proceed. And so, and also, it looks very likely that we're going to get the advice from the General Assembly that the election, our election, needs to be deferred until next year. So, I'm operating on the practical assumption, rather than the legal one, that we probably will not be able to do the referendum this year. And I'm wondering, since the comment was made, and maybe there's a comprehensive plan comment, but it relates to mobility, since the comment was made on how the comprehensive plan depends on the mobility plan, if we have no certainty about the mobility plan, then shouldn't we be thinking harder about coordinating our movement on the two plans? Putting the comprehensive plan in place as is proposed in April, and then not knowing until possibly next year, likely next year, whether we actually have the public on board for the mobility plan strikes me as being a dangerous approach. And I don't feel that the public approval of the mobility plan is by any means a slam dunk. It's something that we can just assume. I guess that's a comment, rather than a question. But I'm really kind of frustrated with a lot of this, because we are just moving ahead, and we are giving these presentations, and objections to the presentations are being treated as questions, rather than possible reasons to actually change what we're doing. And at some point, you know, it's going to be impossible to avoid the reactions that we're getting from some people who are not supportive of what we're doing. We cannot continue to just move ahead on the basis of these saccharine assertions that everybody that matters is excited about this. There are some very serious questions about the General Assembly's acceptance of what we want to do on mobility and related to the 2040 plan. And I really think that we ought to just slow down and give more thought to what we're hearing from some important people. In the last week or two, as you're probably aware, and, all right, I'll talk about NAOP and REBIC when we get to the 2040 plan, but I just want to make the general comment, that this stuff keeps moving forward, and anybody that expresses an objection is treated as having a question, rather than making a contribution that maybe ought to be considered, or they're disregarded. And there are plenty of instances of people who said they went to meetings and didn't feel that anything they said had any impact. So, I just hope that we can broaden this conversation, and it can be more realistic about accepting some of the places from which we aren't getting all kinds of favorable reinforcement. We need to be realistic about this, or we're going to have a hard time meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driggs. Mr. Jones?
And I appreciate that, Mr. Driggs. I will just say, as it relates to the transformational mobility network, the plan, it's going to take us time to get the type of collaboration that we need to even have an opportunity, one day, whatever day that is, to go to the General Assembly and ask for permission. So, I don't want to come across as I was standoffish is what you said. What I do want to say is, we're continuing to work out the legislation, whether it's in 2022, 2023, 2024, and that's what we're doing, working on that and trying to refine the numbers, because, you know, it's extremely complicated, because even when you think about the multiple lines, the red line, the silver line, the gold line, those are three different modes. And how we compete in a federal process to get whatever percentage of the federal funds, whether it's 50%, 40%, you know, 35%. So, I just mean that we are continuing to do the two tasks that you gave me, which was to draft legislation and to also refine the estimates whenever it's the right time to present this, sir.
All right. Mayor Protem?
I took my hand down. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Winston.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Winston.
All right, Mr. Winston?
Yes, I have, I guess, a large question about mobility. I guess it goes to staff, as well as colleagues. You know, I went back and listened to the Charlotte talks last Monday that had a bunch of the mayors and representatives from Lake Norman Chamber of Commerce. And obviously, there was a lot of resistance, although there was a lot of desire for the red line in particular, but no real desire to come up with a plan to figure out how to get it done. We also continue to run, even if we are able to figure it out as a community, we still seem to have this conundrum in Norfolk Southern. It's always a hard thing to say for me. Also, kind of thinking about the delays and the ability to continue to refine the plan, but also looking at the age of the plan. The 2030 plan, which we are kind of, which we are basing everything off of, was, I think, I don't think it considered the growth that is happening in different parts of the city. You know, in particular, I, since I've been serving on council, I've served with two different District III representatives. But both of them have very similar concerns about the dramatic actions that are needed to deal with mobility in areas of, like Steel Creek, for instance. And you look at the plans that are there, you look at the difficulties in dealing with the roads out there, I just question why we haven't looked at providing a mass transit option there, if the northern part of the red line won't be possible. On top of that, you know, we are a 310-square-mile city, or 301, whatever, I don't know if I got those.
I think it's 10.
10, there you go. So, that means that we have a lot of border, and that means that we have different relationships with different folks. I know there was a couple years ago- I know there was a couple of years ago in Mr. Driggs' district at the Valentine Club, there was a huge mobility conference and there was the possibility of South Carolina even wanting to play as a partner in our regional mobility desires and needs. So I guess my question would be to staff, has there been any other type of discussion that looks westward and southward for the red line, for that second half of the red line? Has there been any conversation with the folks over in South Carolina to see if there has been any movement there? And I guess the council, you know, is, do we need, as I've heard colleagues say in the past, do we want to think about different options? Should our initial plans not be feasible, whether it be politically, whether it be planning wise or whether it be cost wise?
That was a big question. So planning wise, that's one. Cost wise, there's probably little ways to pay for that unless we do property taxes. And property taxes are much more regressive than sales taxes and would be a huge burden on those folks that live inside of our city instead of everyone that participates in our mobility inside of the city. So I am very excited.
Why would we have to do it differently? Why would we have to do different type of tax to get rail out to Steel Creek?
No, we wouldn't have to do, we could do the 1%, but if the 1% isn't something that we could do, there are very few other options for taxes of that size. So I'm not saying that we couldn't do it with the 1%. I'm saying that we could, I'm going to let planning, talk about planning, but I was just saying that revenue wise, it's pretty tough to think of how you generate that many millions and billions of dollars and do it in the most equitable way. So that was costs. I'm going to give Ty planning.
So I can answer that in three ways. The task force looked at different tax revenue options, one of them being city centric, which would focus on property tax. And they looked at scenarios where it's 4 cent increase or something like that, probably would generate about 1.7 billion over a 30 or so year period. But understanding also that property tax was something that was not necessarily desirable for a lot of residents. And that's why, at the end of the day, the conclusion was looking at sales tax county wide because it can only be done county wide. That's one answer. The second answer to that is, in addition to the sales tax, believe that three months ago when we talked about the Transformational Mobility Network, we showed you a number of what we currently do right now, steady state that can yield $500 million over a 10-year period because of our 100 million bond cycles for transportation. That, whether the sales tax goes through or not, that will continue to be there because it does not need any increase in tax. But over a 10-year period, that 100 million, every transportation bond cycle will only give you about 500 million, which means doing what we continue to do today. Then the third answer is something that's beyond the city, and that is the work that Connect Beyond is working on, sorry, Council of Government is working on Connect Beyond, which really looks at 12 counties, two states, including South Carolina, and how the red line is not just about Charlotte to North Mac, the silver line from Matthews to the airport, but it really looks at different areas. But not only on rail, also looks at different modes of transportation, express bus, local buses and all of that. There is no number attached to that one yet because that work is supposed to conclude this fall. So that work is going on and CARS and Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization are both partners with the Council of Government on the Connect Beyond work. So the easiest way to answer in terms of geographic areas is obviously the property tax, but that was considered as part of the task force work, but it was set aside in favor of a countywide sales tax proposal.
So I don't quite understand the answers that I'm getting. So we have, what I'm understanding is that we haven't considered a red line, if we're unable to build the northern part of the red line, we haven't considered an uptown to out west alignment because we think it would be more expensive and basically other plans haven't considered this in the past.
No, I think that it's about planning and the time and ability to plan different lines and routes. So Ty?
Yeah, I was.
You said, Mr. Winston's asking.
Yeah, without necessarily going into a lot of details, the 2030 plan that was adopted in 2006 is really what we are going by with regards to the red line, the silver line. The only exception to that 2030 transit system plan is the extension of blue line from 45 and South Boulevard to Pineville and Ballantyne and even the extension of the silver line to Union and Gaston. So the red line has always been from Charlotte to North Mac. Can we take a look at that? Obviously, that would be, just like we've looked at blue line and extending that to Pineville and Ballantyne, that would probably have to be a subject of conversation, but I do see where you're going with that. But the 2030 plan right now is the basis of what the Transformational Mobility Network is when it comes to the rail program.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's what I said. That's what I said, that, you know, this 2006 plan probably didn't consider a 2021 Steel Creek or southwestern corridor, which is, given that, given all of the kind of conditions that we're dealing with right now, might it not make sense that we look a different way, especially if we don't have willing partners that are coming to the table to provide paths forward? We can't make other people work with us if they don't want to put forward other ideas, but we still have the compelling responsibility of moving folks around our city. So that's what I'm saying. I hear you that it wasn't done because we're off this 15-year plan, but I guess part of it's to my colleagues, might we want to look at literal different routes? Thank you.
I think that's a good point because I think we'd have to study it and figure out what it, does it qualify? How does it work? And that's what went into these other plans. And so we do have the ability to do that, Mr. Winston. We'd have to study it to meet the requirements, but there's nothing wrong with studying for the future. I agree with you. I understand.
Well, I would like to do that and whatever, you know, whatever we have to do to kind of have that council conversation, I hope we can do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Watlington?
A quick question for Ty. Ty, a while ago, we talked about traffic demand management and given that there wasn't a lot of plan from a public transit standpoint down in Steel Creek, there, I know that we've discussed before, how do we enhance the parking lot? How do we make it more attractive? And we also talked about working with businesses down there to incentivize employees to use public transit because that's the only way we would convert people in the volume that we would need for the bus to be reliable. I just want to know where that stood and how does that fit? Because I know we're talking a lot about the capital intensive components of this mobility plan, but where are some of the lower hanging fruit?
I think what you're talking about with regards to those tools will be what's referred to as a transportation demand management tool, where we can involve employers in working with us either to provide employer-specific shuttles so that employees in that area can maybe park their car at a particular park and ride lot and then a particular shuttle can pick them up and take them to their respective destinations in the Steel Creek area instead of people driving. That's doable in the absence of a comprehensive plan, is doable in the absence of a transformation and mobility network. I think what's more important there is if a couple of employers can step forward and say, hey, we employ 50 to 200 and some people in the Steel Creek area, we like to have a program of, and CARS has that program, that the CARS has shuttle services or van pool, I should say, that if we have a conversation with employers, even though it's new in the region, but it's not necessarily new to North Carolina, I think that's a conversation that can be had. But it's going to have to do with almost like a public-private discussion to make that happen.
I would like us to prioritize that because there are some things, particularly because of the status of the election and whether or not we'll get the bonds at all. To your point, we could do that regardless. So I'd like to see us have some of those conversations, just to see what's possible.
Okay. All right, I don't see any other hands raised or signs on the, on board for further conversation. So now we're going to move to the comprehensive plan and I guess we'll start, I think almost every council member had their name up. So I wonder if it might just be appropriate for me to go in the order that we have, which this week would be starting with Mr. Driggs and going to Mr. Eggleston. Would that be a suitable thing or Mr. Driggs followed by Mr. Eggleston? Or do you want to just raise your hand as necessary?
Well, Mr. Driggs has his hand up. There's about five people that have.
Okay, there are five people with their hands up. Mr. Eggleston followed by Mr. Driggs.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got one question and then a couple of comments that Ty, whoever the manager, might want to respond to. My first very specific question to either of them, there's reference to July of 2021. There is something that, there are some things that the city of Charlotte needs to have done and other municipalities around the state need to have done to be in compliance with state law. Can someone please, as explicitly as they're able, outline what those things are or what types of things those are and how much work it will require to get those done before July of 2021?
I can speak to that, but I'll like city attorney to weigh in on that as well. But, so this process for the comprehensive plan started in 2018, fall. The UDO started before then, probably about 2016-ish, 2013 was the study, and then 2016 the UDO started. There was nothing in the NCGA legislation with regards to that. So we were moving right along, pushed the UDO back so we could complete the comprehensive plan. But in the process of working on the comprehensive plan, the NCGA issued a statute, I believe is section, chapter 160D, that actually requires municipalities jurisdictions within the state to have their, to consolidate their regulations and ordinances and have their unified development ordinance completed by July of 2021. The effective date of that chapter is actually January of this year, but we're now required to have it completed by July of 2021. While that has not been the driver of our schedule, because we started anyway working on this before, what it did to our schedule was to put some sense of urgency on what we need to do and be able to be in compliance with that. I don't know if the city attorney wants to weigh in on that.
But what you're telling me is that every municipality in the state of North Carolina, maybe I misheard you. If I didn't mishear you, then there's a discrepancy between some people's interpretation of that and what you just said. Are you telling me that every municipality in the state has to do a unified development ordinance?
At least that's what the chapter 160D, in my understanding, says.
Yes, our Lord.
Yes, they have to have their ordinances comply with 160D. That's the effort that all municipalities are going at, and that's what we're doing here.
Okay, well, then that, I might save the rest of that conversation for a later time because it might take longer to unpack than we want to do tonight. The rest of this, I'll preface with saying, first of all, I do appreciate the amount of engagement that has been done with the community. It has been robust engagement. What I will tell you is that there is a difference, and I think people are feeling this difference, between being engaged and being heard versus having questions that have been answered and having concerns that have been raised reflected in the final product. And I have heard, typically on something like this, I would expect that one side of the coin or the other, and when I'm thinking of the two sides of the coin, I'm thinking of folks who are, you know, neighborhood advocates versus the folks who are out actually building the things in our community that this will govern. In this case, I've heard similar feedback from both sides of that coin, and I think that, to me, underscores the validity of what they're saying, that they have undoubtedly been engaged, they have undoubtedly been listened to, but they're not sure, they've asked questions they've not gotten answers to, they've pointed out things that they don't feel have been corrected or changed. And I've got a couple of things that come to mind here. One is, I'm all for our comp plan being aspirational. I do think you have to set a vision that is aspirational for our community on all things. And so I'll use one example. We, as a council, whatever year it was, 2018 or 2019, adopted the Vision Zero goal, which states that there, we will strive to get to zero traffic-related fatalities in our community. That's probably not something we're ever going to achieve, but it's a laudable goal and it's something that we should strive towards. And until we get to a point where we are at zero deaths, traffic-related deaths, we should not be satisfied. And so I don't ever want us to say we can be satisfied with 10 people dying in our streets from traffic-related accidents. However, I do think on that and a host of other things that are in this plan, we can be aspirational by saying anything short of perfection will never be acceptable to the city of Charlotte. And yet, we also acknowledge that we've got to set achievable interim goals to help us get there. So if that's reduce traffic-related fatalities by 50% over the next decade, we say that's not the end game. We're still not satisfied if anyone is dying on our streets, but that's an achievable interim goal that we can set and we can be realistic about. I think aspirational goals, as it relates to things that we don't necessarily currently have the authority to do, we've got to be clear about too. And I think in one case in this plan, it's spelled out that we don't have the authority currently to do inclusionary zoning. It does acknowledge that, but then there are other things in the plan that don't make that same acknowledgement, that there is a hurdle in terms of what we actually have the capability or the authority to do currently. It doesn't mean we shouldn't aspire and we shouldn't strive and lobby to get that authority if that's something we think can help us achieve the goals we've set forward, but I do think we have to be more clear-cut in acknowledging those things. Goals that are in conflict with each other. An example that I think Mr. Bakari has used repeatedly over the past couple of years, sidewalks and trees. We want to have an interconnected sidewalk network. It helps with mobility. It helps us achieve Vision Zero, let people be able to move around our city safely as pedestrians. And yet, it also is in conflict to some degree or another with trying to preserve our tree canopy and trying to not create too much impervious surface, which then generates bigger stormwater issues. So I think where we've got goals that conflict, we can't just say we don't want to tear down any trees, we do want to connect all the sidewalks, and we don't want to make stormwater worse. We've got to acknowledge that all those things are interconnected and figure out some system that gives priority to one versus the other, depending on the situation at hand. There's, you know, I've got questions about how much influence neighborhoods, the little cartoon kind of showed neighbors getting to decide what place types they're going to have in certain parts of their community. I'm curious to know how much influence they'll actually have because I can tell you, you're going to be getting a lot of requests for neighborhood character overlays and historic district applications are probably going to go through the roof because people are going to say, if that's how, you know, quote unquote, preserve my neighborhood, whatever that means, that's what everyone's going to want to do. They're all going to want to do the less intense things. So are we letting them do that just to see what they say? Is it actually going to have any influence? I think they will fairly ask that question. I've got questions about the duplex, duplex, triplex map as well. I know of things literally built within a couple hundred yards of my home that are duplexes in the last 10 years that aren't on that map. So I'm curious where that information came from, though that's a kind of minutia point. I'll wrap it there, but for me, I will, and I'll only speak for myself, though I've talked to others who I think are starting to be on the same page, there's very little chance I'm going to feel like I'm in a place come April that I could vote for this. Not just, I want to vote for our comprehensive plan. I think April is an unrealistic timeline, given. plan. I think April is an unrealistic timeline, given a lot of the things that have been pointed out, where this still needs some more work. And it's not that there hasn't been community engagement, because there has. It's that people feel like they have sent in questions, they have sent in discrepancies, they have sent in things and not gotten an answer, and they have not seen those changes made. And in some instances, things that just flat out, they deem to be wrong. So I think we either, if we're not going to change it because we disagree with their opinion, we've got to give them a response that explains why we don't think their opinion is is accurate. And a lot of that doesn't seem to have been done. And again, it's not the development community is saying this, or the neighborhood advocates are saying this. It's both sides are painting a similar picture of, yes, we've been, we've been at the table, but we're not sure we've been heard. And so, sorry to throw all that on you at once, Ty. I think you and your team have done amazing work on a lot of this and a lot of other things. But I just don't think we are inside of 60 days from being ready to move this thing to a vote. And I think we've still got, and we, I count the 12 of us amongst the we, I think we all still have a lot of work left to do before this is going to be ready for showtime. And so any feedback on any of that is welcome and appreciated.
So I would, thank you very much, Councilman Augustine, for your comments on that. And that's usually, I mean, that's not the first time I will hear that about a master plan or comprehensive plan. But like I said during my intro, one of the things that we did not want to do, and you do not want to do about a comprehensive plan, is get 10 comments today and respond to them immediately. We typically will acknowledge them, because in the process of responding to them, you're likely going to get another comment that may contradict the previous comment. And so it's often always good to make sure that you have comments that come in. And we actually thought at the beginning that we should set a deadline for comments, but we decided we were not going to do that. Because once you set a deadline for comments, then people will tend to think that, you know, they don't have the opportunity once they miss that day. So what we've been doing is receiving them. In some instances, when they come by emails, we acknowledge them. Thank you very much for your comment, and we document them. But the vast majority of commenters go straight to the website, and they actually make their comments there. So the, we could do this, revise the draft document to mirror some of those comments. But what we do not want to do is to have to produce another 300 and some-page document that has, you know, revisions or responses to comments. Hence the reason why we're saying we will begin to share with TAP and council and the community how we respond to those comments after the March 22 public hearing. You could have somebody who has not even provided any comment at all, who will show up at a public forum on March 22 and provide comments. We may not be able to respond to those comments that very evening, but we will hold ourselves accountable to respond to those comments shortly after. So it's really about responding to them together rather than a piecemeal approach. That's pretty much why, for everyone that has sent email to us with regards to comment, we've acknowledged them, thank you very much for sharing this with us. We make sure that we we consider this. And again, I do know that sometimes when people read some of these documents, it may not necessarily be written out the very way that they have suggested. And so there's got to be a way we can rephrase some of those statements that are more, you know, planning speak, so that when the UDO is set in place, it policy is about. So that could be there. I acknowledge that, you know, we've got a lot of comments. But I've also, I will also say that we've also received a lot of messages from people who felt that the comments actually reflected what they, I mean, the document reflected what they what they had said before. But we will dial back, we'll go back, make sure that we look at those comments as we're responding to them, and questions as we are answering them, to make sure that, you know, we are, when we come back, probably after the March 22 hearing, you have a document that actually, not necessarily revised document, but you see how those comments, every single one of them, have been responded to. And again, that's kind of, it's the process. I've been through multiple comprehensive plans already, and that's typically the way you do your process. You gather all the comments, respond to them at one time, rather than gather comments now, respond to the people, gather another comment. Some of the comments are grammatically related, and we go there and fix. But we just want to make sure that after the March 22, when you have the public hearing, that's when we will release information on how those comments are being responded to. And I would like Alicia to speak a little bit more to that.
Can I, can I be sure that I understood what you just said? I'm going to repeat it. What you're saying is, I've seen the comments, they range all the way from vision to punctuation.
Yes.
And what you're going to do is keep the comments.
Yes.
And that you will provide a response to every comment that you have so far and those that are coming in.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And when is the timeframe for doing that?
So we have March 22 public hearing.
March 22?
Yes.
Prior to the public hearing?
We will still have comments on that.
Or after, prior to or after the public hearing?
Oh, we're still having comments all the way to March 22.
Okay.
And so after March 22 is when we're going to step forward with comment, with responses.
I think the other thing to note as well about receiving the comments is that staff will not make the unilateral decision as to what gets incorporated into the plan, which is the other reason why we collect them and present them to council, to the planning commission, and then to council who makes the decision what gets incorporated to the plan. If we were to respond now and just start responding to questions that we receive and then revise the plan, that would be something that staff will have to do, and that's not our role. It's council to make the policy and actually say what gets incorporated.
I think it's a misunderstanding of communication of what the plan, how to respond and what's going on. But it doesn't alleviate some of the other ideas that how do we get more of those things into the public space so that people can see all of those things? And not being heard is an important thought. And if people are saying that they're not heard, then we need to figure out how to make them heard before March 22, if we're going to meet the deadlines that you that we've talked about. But I know that's another conversation.
Mayor Lyles, I have a 10-second question for Mr. Baker before I yield, if I can.
Okay.
I just want him to clarify again, because I'm not sure I heard correctly. The state requirement is requiring every municipality to have a UDO by, or yes or no, and by what date, because that is not my understanding of what that is requiring.
A comp plan is what the state requires, and that has to be done by July of 2022. The, every municipality's development ordinance is, whether it's in a UDO or otherwise, need to align with chapter 160D by July 1 of this year.
Okay, that's more aligned with what my understanding was. Thank you.
I have.
All right, yes.
I have one other comment about responding. As we're receiving the comments, the residents or neighborhoods are receiving an email where we're offering to have a meeting to discuss their comments. So we're scheduling those up until adoption, if that be April or at a later date, to really talk to people about, so they have an opportunity to speak with us directly about their comments.
It might be helpful to inform the TAP committee, as well as all of the council members, those meetings. It's just, it's, this is game time, and everybody needs to be in. And no one, you know, it can't be, you know, the B squad and not the A squad. So get everybody in. All right, I'm going to follow up with our next speaker, I'm not next speaker, next comments by Mr. Driggs.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to also pick up on what Mr. Eggleston said. The requirement that we have this year is to remedy any discrepancy between our existing ordinance and state law. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
So we can satisfy that requirement by identifying any issues we may have, any discrepancies that may exist, and we can remedy those. So I would like to propose, and I've talked about this with colleagues, that the staff tell us what the issues are that we need to address in order to be in compliance with the state law about getting our ordinance in order. The other point is that the ordinance about the law about the comprehensive plan, as I understand it, says that every city must have a comprehensive plan by the deadline of '22. We have a comprehensive plan currently. It's an old one, but we have one. Is that not true?
I didn't get that question.
Well, do we have a comprehensive, existing comprehensive plan?
We do not. The state does mandate the completion of a comprehensive plan. However, what the state did not indicate in its requirements is what that comprehensive plan should look like. However.
So what I'm saying is, there is an old comprehensive plan that we that we adopted a long time ago that is still in place. And on the basis of that, we are in compliance with the requirement that municipalities have a comprehensive plan. There is no deadline by which we have to adopt a new one. Is that wrong?
There's no existing comprehensive plan. We do have area plans. If I may, maybe the city attorney can correct me on this, but this is really what chapter 160 says. It consolidates current city and county-enabling statutes for development regulations. That specifically says that into a single unified chapter. So it's not about the plan as much as it's about the development regulations, which are coded in the UDO. And so, in order for us to be able to get that UDO done the way we're approaching it right now, which is having eight documents in one, we need a new plan that's citywide to be able to help us do that, because the UDO will be citywide. What we have today is, we have the centers, corridors, and wedges, and then we have the different community plans. But there is not
Mr. J. Over, excuse me, but I would like the city attorney to clarify a legal question, not necessarily in this meeting, but I would like to hear from the city attorney exactly what the obligation is that we have to satisfy in 2022, and to have him confirm that nothing that exists right now might actually satisfy that. But the most critical piece of this is that the 2021 requirement is one that could be met. And again, I would like the staff to tell us what it would take to meet that requirement without necessarily adopting a UDO or some huge plan. Because what my feeling is, and not my advice that I've had from outside, is that, again, there is a finite list of corrections or amendments that we would have to make to the framework we have right now, and we could meet the 2021 legal requirement. At the moment, I'm just going to put that out there as something that is pending, but I think it is an important issue.
Mr. Driggs, Mr. Driggs, could I just say, I'd like to ask, not put it out there in the future, this is a deadline, and the question about is whether or not we have to meet the deadline. So I would just like to say to Ms., our city attorney, sorry, Mr. Baker, is to say, Mr. Driggs is asking, can we be legal with the existing or without a comp plan? And we need to get that answer more quickly than not. So we shouldn't just put it out there. Let's go to deadline and have it done. Okay, sorry, Mr. Driggs, I just thought your question was important.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the clarification. In a more general vein, I'd like to note that I think in the last few weeks, we've seen a big increase in interest in this plan and activity. And I will be the first to admit that this engagement is arriving late. And I fault some of the people who are starting to make themselves heard for leaving it this long before making their position known. But at this point, we're, I'm being presented with actual lists of comments and issues, and some of them are very broad in nature. For example, the contradictory nature of some of the goals of the plan, and the legal questions about parts of the plan. So I don't want to try and enumerate or or quote from any of that. I'm just saying that based on this input from industry sources and from the public, I think we still have a lot of work to do. And I'm particularly concerned at the idea that we're not going to hear any response from the staff to the concerns that have been raised until after March 22. And the expectation is that we're going to adopt this plan in April. I don't think that the input that we're getting now is properly resolved in a couple of weeks. So I'm with Mr. Eggleston in terms of thinking, we have got to allow more time to work on this. And I would just love to see us have a more meaningful engagement with some people who are affected by this and don't like the way it looks right now. A lot of the things that are being brought out are not self-interest driven or controversial. They are valid questions. And in particular, as it relates to single-family neighborhoods, what we are doing is we are saying that single-family homes will be permitted, but we are still targeting single-family neighborhoods. And in some tweets, these have been characterized as the source of discrimination in housing in the past. And I think we need to be very sensitive and accepting of concerns about people who live in single-family neighborhoods, appreciate that lifestyle, are not responsible for any for the racial divide, and have a right to be heard. The single-family neighborhood is an American tradition everywhere in the country and in other countries. And the dream has been, you get a job, you get married, you buy a house. So I think if we're setting our sights on single-family neighborhoods with the goals of breaking them up and making them include other types of housing, that is something that is very serious and that is going to get more and more response from the public as the public becomes aware. And again, Mr. J. Over, I fully accept that we have made every effort to publicize this thing and to reach out. But I've said in past meetings, I don't think that the response that we've had really reflects the mix of the community. And we're starting to get that other input now. And I think we need to take our time and make sure we get this right. We don't have an election this year, so there's no issue about us having to campaign for office. We can take our time. And for something as important as this, that looks that far into the future, I think getting it right is more important than getting it done in April. So I hope that we can change the schedule on this, and that we will hear a much more significant and respectful response to some of the objections that are being raised from the staff. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Newton?
Madam Mayor, I would agree with both of my colleagues. I feel like there is a lot of work that that needs to be done here. I am not familiar with 160D, so this conversation has, it has contained a lot of nuance, a lot of novel information for me. I would be interested in finding out more about that, actually, Mr. City Attorney. And to to Councilmember Driggs's point, having a better understanding of what, short of a full-fledged 2040 comprehensive plan that we're being presented with today, we can do to meet whatever standard we have to meet by July 2021. Now, maybe that's everything, but it sounds like maybe, maybe it's not. And to the extent that it's not, I would like to know that. And so I just wanted to make that additional slight clarification on the request, because I'm not sure if that nuance came across a moment ago. I wanted to ask, so, so Mr. Taiwo had had mentioned that that there are a lot of people in the community that are still asking a lot of questions and not really making as many comments. And I think that that really illustrates the point here, that this is a very, very complex, very intricate plan that we're talking about with a lot of moving parts. And it is hard for, well, for regular people, let alone council members like myself, to wrap our arms around it and fully understand what's going on. Personally, I feel like there've been times where I thought I got it, and then something, something else is presented, and then it changes, you know, changes my whole perspective. And I think that I have a good understanding right now, but I had some questions just to get some confirmation on that, just preliminarily speaking, some questions for confirmation. The first being about these place types and whether place types will be binding on developers. It sounds as though place types are going to be replacing our current zoning designations altogether. In that regard, they would be binding. Is that the case? Are we talking about a plan here that is reassessing all of our zoning designations and replacing them with zone, with place types?
So I'll start, and then I'll have Alicia jump in. No, place types will not replace zoning designations. Place type, however, will, the place type map will, however, replace what we have today, which is called the Future Land Use Plan. It is the place types that eventually will be translated to zoning districts through the UDO process. In the comprehensive plan document, I think the last, probably the last 50 pages or so, is really the Place Types Manual, where it describes each one of the 10 place types in terms of land use, character, everything associated with a particular place type, whether it's Neighborhood 1 or Neighborhood 2 or Campus or Institutional whether it's Neighborhood 1 or Neighborhood 2 or Campus or institutional, whatever those uses may be. It has illustrated concepts, maps on those areas, but they are not set in stone. Because the plan is that council, upon an adoption of a policy framework and the concept behind a place type, the community would then go ahead and work with us to map what each of these place types will be like before it's translated into zoning districts. So if you look in that, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but it's electronically available as well. But once you get to the last 50 pages of the comprehensive plan, that's when you see an entire place type manual. And that really helps to describe that. So place types and zoning districts are not the same. Place types will be translated into zoning district. Today, we have a lot of zoning districts. What the place type does is to reduce the number of zoning districts we have without, for example, I think Laura showed you that in Neighborhood 1, you're going to have R3, R4, R5, R6, 8. So those are in our current zoning ordinance, but they will be part of a place type. And then once we change the zoning, translate the place types into zoning districts, that will be through the U D O process. Okay?
So what I think I'm hearing here is that they will complement one another. We will be engaging in a rezoning or reassessment of our zoning dependent upon what the place types are. Is that a counter assessment?
I think I'll answer the question here you may be not asking, and correct me if I am wrong. The adoption of the comprehensive plan, policy, and place types concept is not the end of community engagement in the community mapping process. The council is adopting a comprehensive plan along with its policies that will eventually, obviously. If that's a decision that council makes, then we spend the next six months working with the community to map each one of those place types. And then those place types will feed into the zoning, into the U D O. We will translate them. The best example I can give you is the Transit oriented Development Ordinance that you worked on about a year or so ago. Remember that it came, first of all, in form of policy around the blue line light rail. Then we developed a set of criteria and maps for you revising the policy, and eventually those translated into remapping all the districts along the blue line to be able to conform with what that U D Ordinance says. So that's at the micro level, and the translation between place types and the zoning districts into the U D O will be at a macro level.
Well, zoning districts will change, though.
The zoning districts, zoning districts will be different, yes. They will change based on certain things, yes.
The place types will limit the scope of what those changed zoning districts will be, correct? Or at least what they'll allow?
The place types actually make the zoning districts, first of all, it makes these zoning districts more transparent and more predictable. And it also makes the number of zoning districts that you have to deal with manageable and minimal in number.
So, and I guess in that regard, limit the scope of what eventually the zoning districts will become, right?
Yes, yes.
I think, you know, a lot of, okay, okay. So anyhow, maybe, and correct me if my assessment on this is wrong, we're talking about the comprehensive plan at least in as much, I mean, there are a lot of different plans that go into this, but at least in as much as development is concerned, we're really talking about, and those place types, we're talking about the establishment of what the place types will be. And then thereafter, the U D O, it's not as though the place types are going to be adopted in the U D O, rather, they will be referenced for the sake of establishing those new zoning districts.
Yes, so what, yeah, so what you're adopting as part of the comprehensive plan is those 10 place types. But then work will still be done that will eventually be translated into the U D O. So, yeah, you got it right.
Now, if there's any type of zoning that doesn't fit within the place types that we're talking about adopting in this comprehensive plan, which could happen, I guess, as early as April, if it's not there, then it won't exist.
So you're not.
And what our planning is conducted for the U D O later, right?
So you're not adopting any zoning district as part of a comprehensive plan. You're only adopting the concepts behind the place types. And then once we translate them into the district, everything in that particular place types that we've mapped to the community will translate into the district. So you are not going to miss anything. Now, does it mean that a place type cannot change in terms of mapping after the adoption? No. Once we start working with community, that may change. Those place types may very well change, but they will inform what the zoning district eventually will be that will go into the, into the U D O.
But if a zoning designation doesn't fall within one of those place types that's adopted, then it can exist later on in the U D O and the mapping sequences, is what it sounds like to me. And I guess, so I'll move along here. I guess my question maybe underscores the point that we have heard from so many in the community more recently in as much as these triplexes and duplexes are concerned. It sounds like within the place types, within the residential place types that are included in the comprehensive plan, every single residential place type, even the lowest density place type, which would be an R3, would allow for duplexes and triplexes. And in that regard, would allow for effectively or essentially the opportunity to include twice to maybe three times as many units, and that's before the G D P. Is that right?
So, maybe there's a longer way I can answer your question, Councilmember Newton. When we started engaging the community, there were a number of things we heard very clearly. One was affordable housing being a priority for us as a city. And if you really, truly want to be able to have more housing units, especially for missing middle, one of those things that you do is to be able to allow them in different parts of the city. Because today, where we can have them is pretty much limited, and it's the reason why what you have today is about 5,600 or so units that were built mostly in the 1950s. So that's what led to that, because it was in response to what we're hearing. Understanding that, you know, today they are limited to corner lots and certain other places, but how can we, you know, have more opportunities for townhomes, detached, single-family, I mean, attached, single-family homes, triplexes and duplexes in other parts of the city rather than in just one area of the city, where, you know, you'll be able to, as far as market would, you know, would determine that, obviously, we know that, and land values, we cannot regulate those or even make policies around those. And so that's really what led to that. Now, we had some qualifier. A quadruplex, for example, will only be allowed a longer anterior, provided that there is an affordable housing unit that comes along with it. And so these are just different ways. Is it the only solution? By all means, no. Hence the reason why we also talk about inclusionary housing, that at some point in our future, maybe that's a tool in our toolbox that we may be able to add to this. But as you bring different tools into the box, eventually, we continue to have different opportunities for us to be able to increase the number of affordable housing units we have as a city. So that's a long answer to address your question. But again, that's really what we've been hearing during engagement about the need to do this throughout the city. But now, you know, that we're hearing that there are concerns about it, we obviously have to look at that as well, as to how do you make this, you know, really bring this to life through the U D O, which is really what Laura went through with you. Because it's not just going to say because you allow it all through the city, it's going to happen.
Now, I get it. I mean, we definitely have a need for affordable housing in our city. This is one way to address that need. But what I'm really talking about here is the uptick in density literally anywhere in it being allowed under these circumstances, if it were to move forward, being allowed by rights. And we talk about equity, right? You can look at the maps. And so one of the, I think, the great things about the comprehensive, so this draft comprehensive plan are all the maps within it. Now, mind you, I'm disappointed that I didn't see the mapping of the place types, but now I understand that that's something that will be done later in the U D O process. But nevertheless, there are maps within, you know, throughout the entire comprehensive plan. And it really shows where we're falling short in different areas throughout the city. Certainly in East Charlotte, my side of town, we have the fewest jobs, right? I would love to hear more about whatever the job plan is for East Charlotte. But nevertheless, you know, once you get further from the city core, what you will see, and this is indicative, I mean, this is illustrated in these maps, you'll start to see fewer and fewer amenities available to the local populations. And when we talk about equity, I mean, we're talking about creating livable neighborhoods where people can live, work, and play, and certainly doing it in a context where people can commute or travel where they need to travel within a 10-minute period. But nevertheless, there are areas where development is occurring at a very rapid, so growth is occurring at a very rapid pace in those amenities, that infrastructure, the transportation, the jobs, don't exist there today. And if we're talking about a blanket provision allowing for this potential upzoning by rights, then we're talking about allowing developers who are already building today to just further expedite that process, build even more, and put us further behind as a city in catching up with the needed infrastructure and other amenities of the community. And that really, really concerns me here. And I would ask that there be a lot more work done on that. You know, we're a 310-square-mile city. I heard, I think Councilmember Winston had said that earlier, that's a lot of territory. And, you know, we're not covering it all. We don't have public transportation everywhere. We don't have lights and sidewalks. I could go on, but to allow the growth in these areas where it's already occurring to continue to occur exponentially, I think, just is inequitable, not the smartest way of going about doing it. I would like, so I appreciate that we're going to continue this conversation. I agree with my colleagues that I think that there's a lot more work left to be done. I would like to know more about what the jobs plan is here, some economic development plan in those areas that are identified within the comprehensive plan document to not have those jobs. I also have a question pertaining to the U D O, but I'll wait to ask that in the next round of questions. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Protim?
We couldn't hear you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protim? I'm sorry, Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my comments have to do with a lot of what my colleagues have said and in talking to people over the weekend and today. And I think that this is an example of the fact that we need an opportunity to talk about this more and to address the questions. I don't even know if everybody's had a chance to read the whole presentation and all the emails that we've just been getting, but I think what would be more productive is if everybody had a little bit of time to go through it and also the emails where, you know, Rebic, some of these organizations have questions. And then we have a separate meeting just to be able to ask these questions, because this just feels like, this alone could be a half-day discussion, is a workshop on its own. It's probably the most important thing, the most transformational thing any of us will do in our time on council. And to, the flip side of that is staff has put in two years' worth of work on this, and so have a lot of people in the community, anybody who's gone, this and the U D O. So just to be fair to everybody, you know, now is the time when we've got to really dig into this, talk to constituents, talk to whoever is giving feedback, and then be able to have opportunity to talk with you more fully and not just as a single agenda item for the evening. So I wondered, both as a group and even in small groups, I wonder if perhaps we should be scheduling that instead.
I think that considering the strategy portion of this, usually, we have something that there has been a lot more, usually, we have something that has had a lot more dialogue, a lot more cohesiveness in thought and action. And what I'm hearing are more questions that would ordinarily be addressed outside of a meeting like this. Usually, we're asking here, what else do we need to do? And I'm hearing us say, well, we don't know the questions to even ask, and we don't know the deadlines, and we don't know the requirements. Now, there's a, I've heard a lot, but I would say that we could probably schedule something this week, even morning, afternoon, or evening, and we can do it in two groups, so we can do it as a whole and just have a public meeting, because I think it's fair to actually, as you talk about this, and you've talked about it in a number of ways around engagement, to have it be a virtual meeting where people can actually talk or maybe even have it with the idea of the town halls that are coming up, to be able to communicate their questions and to anticipate. I think we did that when we did the Safe Charlotte work. We had the discussion, and then it was opened up for comments from the public, not just those that were active in the group that was helping us develop this. And a lot of this depends on what our limitations are and what we have to do to resolve it. And right now, I think none of us really have a firm handle, or at least what I would call a common foundation and understanding of it. So I don't know, you know, the calendar is full, but I would ask if the council would be willing to plan and schedule something, and we would work with Ms. Jackson to get that done within the next seven or eight days, seven days in minimum, I guess. So Mayor Protim, you suggested it. I don't know, I would like to see, we've got questions and comments. Can we take this deck down? And then I could see where people are and what their thinking is. Right now, we have, one, two, three, four additional comments or questions to be made and addressed now, so.
One more in addition to that.
And another person, so five more people that would like to speak on this. And I think it would be very helpful if you said, here are my questions, and then we just listed them, and Ty wouldn't have to go through the explanation, Alyssa wouldn't have to do that. So I think, continue to have the questions from council members and then ask the staff to plan a meeting in the next five days, perhaps by the end of the week, if at all possible. So if you agree with the idea of an extra meeting as quickly as possible, I can see you physically, would you raise your hand, please? I see Mr. Bakari, I see one, two, three.
Mr. Bakari does not have his hand.
I know, I saw Mr. Bakari's hand. I was thinking about, so we have Mr. Phipps, Ms. Iselt, Mr. Winston, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Ashmira, are you in your chin or is your hand up?
No hand.
No hand. So we've got four people that are willing to have a meeting, and I think that that's worth doing.
And Mr. Driggs had to reboot his computer.
Oh, Mr. Driggs is rebooting his computer. But I think that having that four-person meeting would really help, because at least it can be livestreamed and everybody would be able to see it as a virtual meeting. So we'll go ahead and plan that for those that wish to attend, and if others don't, that's okay as well. So let's have the meeting. And then what I'd like to do is ask if we are going to ask questions that you'd like the staff to respond to, or do you want to make statements for the remainder of this meeting? So if you'd like to ask a combination of, would you like to ask questions only that the staff will work? I've got one, two, three, Mr. Winston, Ms. Ashmira, and Mr. Bakari would like to ask questions.
And Mr. Phipps.
And Mr. Phipps, that's four. So we'll proceed with that. And then you've got, you're helping me keep up with what I'm saying, right, Ms. Jackson? Okay. So we'll have the meeting with four, and we'll have four people to ask their questions for a response, and we could do those questions at that meeting in real time after we get them tonight. And so the remainder of people that have signed up, we will ask, or it is who would like to continue to be on the list to speak tonight? Raise your hand, please. All right? We've got four people, Mr. Winston, Ms. Ashmira, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Watlington.
Mr. Phipps and Mr. Bakari.
Mr. Phipps, are you sure you want to, I thought you wanted to come to the meeting, Mr. Phipps? But we'll do all. Okay, we'll just keep going.
I do, I do want to come to the meeting, but I do have a question.
No.
Yeah, me too.
So we'll go ahead and continue if you would ask your questions, and then we'll just continue with the list that I have and so that we can recognize everyone. Mr. Phipps, you're up next for your questions.
Yeah, it was stated earlier that the existing covenants, rules, or restrictions or whatever would not be interrupted. So my question is, in the case where you have a planned urban development, would those existing covenants and deed restrictions be in place, or would this U D O still allow quadruplexes, duplexes, or whatever to be, to override those covenants and to be developed in the community?
Okay, we'll ask the city attorney to prepare an answer for that question. Okay, we'll ask the city attorney to prepare an answer for that question for the meeting. All right, do you have another question, Mr. Phipps?
No, that was it. I mean, I had some comments, but my colleagues already addressed them, because I've been in similar meetings over the past week, and one thing that was said was that the people thought that the plan needs repair, not a rewrite, so let's encourage you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Ashmira, you're next. Do you recognize?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So some of my questions around placetimes were already addressed, so I just have one question left here, and Ty, well, you don't have to respond to that right now if you're not prepared, it could be part of our follow-up package. But I know that staff has done an extensive amount of community outreach, and we have had hundreds of engagements with various stakeholders. I'm trying to understand what changes have been made as a result of community forum, and I think this goes to, goes back to Mr. Eggleston's comment earlier about making sure people are not only being heard, but their input has been also incorporated in our 2020 plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ashmira. We'll get that question for the meeting as well. All right, Ms. Watlington, you recognize?
I won't talk long, I just concur with everything many of my colleagues have already said here. I don't have any questions, and I refer back to what Councilmember Driggs said earlier about comments and direction being treated as questions. I think that that is essentially what I'm hearing as a theme here. I think it's very clear, there are concerns with the single-family and the density piece. I'd like to see that sooner rather than later, updates to that. As I think about how we execute, and Councilmember Eggleston mentioned this, I think it's important that we have more granularity about how the timing falls, not in the law, but in how we plan to execute some of these values. We know where we want to be, but we've got to consider where we are. For example, when we talk about increasing density or allowing an increase in density or incentivizing it to get 70% AMI, that in many cases, where it's going to go, it's going to be rental, and it's going to be well above that local market, because, let's be honest, the development's going to happen where the rent is cheaper, that's what we're seeing right now. In that case, that is actually doubling the community concern, because it is driving out not only opportunities for homeownership, but also raising the local market rate. And so those are some of the issues that exacerbate instability in already vulnerable neighborhoods. And so I certainly am confident that staff and that everybody around the diocese is wanting to improve equity and that they're approaching it with that heart, but I do think that if we're not careful about how we do this, we're going to end up delivering the exact same results after all of this effort, and so I'm extremely concerned about that. So I would like to see some new options. I'm not so much interested in having another conversation about giving the same feedback or about asking questions, I want to be able to see how we're changing based on what we've seen so far. I'm in the same place as Councilmember Ellis did mention in terms of having a hard time seeing how I'm going to get behind this without substantial changes to that particular component. Overall, however, from what I've been able to read so far, I am hopeful in this plan. There is something, though, that I still have not heard that I'd like to, that I'd like to know. What about this new plan improves the process such that we won't be dealing with decades-old plans? I hear us saying we're going to require that we update this every five years. I have to believe that with the existing area plans, that was probably the intent as well, and I haven't heard anything in this process specifically that would give me confidence that we're not going to be talking about a comprehensive plan or placetimes that are more than five years old at some point, given that we've got the same amount of staff and larger landmass and more parcels, or not more parcels necessarily, but more people and development. So those are the two things that I want to see different the next time we have this conversation. Thank you.
All right, so we'll try to have that question addressed during the virtual meeting as well, and make sure that council members get a link to all of this. All right, so Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, I have a couple of comments and some questions also that can be answered later. The first comment that I want to make is to draw the attention to my colleagues about the concern and the input from the residents about implanting multifamily or duplexes or triplexes in a single-family development. This only validates the residents' concerns on the petition number 202118. This is exactly what's happening with that. This was originally a conventional rezoning that did not, was not up for public input, and once it was, this is the kind of input that you receive from the residents in District Four. And on social media, you know, it could have been alluded that that was an envyism, but it wasn't. They were trying to protect the character and the cohesiveness of their neighborhood. So I would hope you all are as concerned about the petition that I brought to your attention as you are for all residents of the city. My question that I wanted to know is where can we see the feedback from the residents prior to the March 22nd meeting? Are we, as council, able to see that feedback maybe in a weekly report or something like that, if there's a pie graph or something, so we know what the residents of the city...
It's online, Ms. Johnson. We'll send the link, have the staff send the link tomorrow where all of those comments are online.
That'd be great, because I went online when they were talking about it, and I didn't see where I could find those comments publicly. So yeah, I'd like to be able to see that.
We'll send the link, and that way you can just click on it, and it'll be there. Alyssa, right? Okay, thank you.
Is that correct, the comments are viewable online?
Yes, they are, yeah.
Viewable online. Well, we'll send the link to you.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to know when, I know that it's going to be adopted, I think in October, or the plan or the UDO is going to be adopted in October of '21. I wanted to know when it would be implemented? And the reason I ask that is because in January of 2020, I asked during the strategic planning session if an interim plan was available, so that neighbors or potential homebuyers could have some type of predictability when they're buying their home. So if it's not going to be available until, you know, 2022, if there's something that residents can rely on of what the neighborhood's going to look like, if it's possible to have an interim, some type of interim report. I also wanted to know is with the UDO, will we have more conventional petitions, meaning less community feedback? And if so, is it possible that residents will have the option to use the protest petitions? I know that used to be a tool for residents, but I just want to know if petitions, if there's going to be more conventional petitions, how are residents able to have input in the development in their neighborhood? Also, is the list of community members public that are a part of the plan? You mentioned that there were community member volunteers. I wanted to know, is that list public, or are all districts and income levels represented? I wanted to know how diverse that list of volunteers was.
It is public, so we'll get the list to you, or the staff will get the list to you.
Thank you. And then one of the things you said was quadruplexes are allowed on arterial streets. Is that a consideration for duplexes and triplexes as well? We know, you know, we know we need more density, but what residents and council is asking for is smart design and to preserve the neighborhood characters and congruency and just in some design oversight and accountability. I wanted some clarification on building envelope and coverage, the mixed-income guidelines, and the neighborhood character overlay, because one of the council members said, you know, I think that a lot of people would be asking for that exemption, because all neighborhoods, or most neighborhoods, have unique character. So if we could get some more information on what the requirements are going to be for neighborhood character overlay? And then the thoroughfares. Many of the thoroughfares are state-owned in my district, and I know other districts. So will the process for approval for rezoning, will that be, will there be more coordination with the state, or is there some consideration for state-owned roads?
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is our last person that is asked to speak. I think everyone has had a chance. Mr. Bakari?
Thank you. So we've heard a lot tonight, and I'll address this as a comment to the city manager, Mr. Manager. I hope this is crystal clear to you that there is no path where this can happen in the next 60 days. We have staff that's done a lot of hard work, but I think it's become crystal clear, a lot of that work over the last two years has been focused, maybe not entirely on all the things that should have been. And we are not going to solve this in a series of three-hour afternoon meetings of council getting together. We need to take a hard, long look inward, pump the brakes, and figure out how we reset from here. This comp plan is truly our blueprint. It's the instruction manual when we sit down to build out the UDO, and it is too important for us to get wrong. It's too important for us to try to figure out how to jam it through in the last hours. This is as complicated as a blueprint can possibly get. It's a rocket ship blueprint. And what we're going to do is, if we jam this through in the next 60 days, we're going to find when we sit down to assemble this rocket ship, we're going to have opened up a 320-page manual of beautiful pictures of rocket ships and lists of great places you can go in rocket ships. And we're going to have to spend the next several years in monthly rezoning meetings trying to figure out how we get ourselves out of the situation we've created for ourselves with a plan that is ultimately, you know, just full of a lot of aspirational themes, which can be good, and I believe in this case can be bad, because we are setting ourselves up for the failure of ultimately how people, how the community, how everyone's going to measure us and what we can do. And all the buzzwords in the world and pretty pictures that are inside there right now are not going to come bail us out at that point. So I just, you know, I have never, I've been saying this, and I'm sure I've sounded like a broken record for three, three and a half years on this council, which is, when this community realizes what's going on now, and they're not going to realize it through board games and all kinds of fancy videos, when they realize what's happening, there is going to be an awakening and a pushback potentially of significant proportions, perhaps the largest we've seen in modern history here. And that means we have to get this perfect, like we cannot mess around, and I hope that you all kind of see the same thing I see, which is, there are people that we always hear from, always hear from on these topics, whenever they are. And then there are people who I'm great friends with that literally wouldn't talk about city council with me if I paid them to sit down and do it. Those are the ones that are calling me saying, what are you guys doing? What's going on? As soon as I hear that, I know that this has hit a different level than we're used to seeing, and it could be very, very serious. So in my opinion, there is only one path forward from this point, which is pump the brakes as hard as you possibly can, get with the city attorney, and figure out what the absolute minimum criteria is to meet the 2021 legal requirements, and then go back to square one using what we have as the starting point, but bring the stakeholder groups around the table and figure out who wins in the scenarios between trees and sidewalks when they come up. What ultimately happens when that first dwelling, that dwelling unit in a quadruplex is going to be, you know, decided upon, and who gets it first between the four people that are in those lots? And the dozens and dozens and dozens of other unanswered tactical questions that you have to have in your blueprint or in your instructions when you sit down to build the rocket ship, because if we're building this thing while it's flying, we're going to experience some serious, serious turbulence.
All right, thanks, everyone. This has been a very useful discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, Mr. Winston. I'm sorry, Mr. Winston?
Yes, thank you. You know, this conversation, it reinforces that a lot of people, the idea that a lot of people want change, but a lot of people don't want to be part of the change. A lot of the criticisms that I've heard from my colleagues are less an indictment of staff or anybody else, but it's an indictment of ourselves. It is our job to create policy, give guidance, and to adjust that guidance to staff as we go through the process. The entire, all of my time that I've been on council, I have been part of the transportation and planning or CATE committee, and I can tell you that the process and the way this has gone basically is, it follows step by step the guidance that we have given staff. As this process started, if you, for folks that were on council, you remember that we started the comprehensive plan process while the UDO was already in progress, and we went step by step, even as the plan was initially introduced, to change the way we interact with our constituents, the roadmap, everything that has been laid out here, council, city council, has guided staff to do. So a lot of the, so that's the way we need to operate here. If you guys want this process to change, then we have to stop, we have to talk less about the politics of constituent groups and talk more about the policy and the different type of guidance that we want to give staff. It is not just staff's job to change interpretations of policy based on constituent feedback. It's based on the six votes at least of council. And so I hear a lot of folks saying, well, you haven't done it. Well, we have not told them to do anything differently. We've expressed our ideas, concerns of our constituents, but we have not come together as a group to give them different guidance. Now, I know we've been dealing with a lot over the past year in terms of council action around COVID, pandemic relief, Safe Charlotte, this, that, and the other. But between, we can have all of the meetings that we want with groups and stakeholders, but if the 11 of us are not having policy discussions amongst ourselves, then these kind of political questions that have been put out here are never going to get answered. So yes, I think we should have more meetings to do more of our work, but I would put it out, especially to the district reps, I'd love to work with you as an at-large member so that we can, so that we can hear everybody's concerns and figure out a way, if the need be, to craft this into a policy and guidance discussion that we can effectively work on in an efficient amount of time. Nobody has suggested that to this point, but please, please reach out to me, I will reach out to you guys after this, and see if we can set up some one-on-one time to get a better understanding of the comprehensive nature of the guidance that we have already given staff and what we might think we might need to do to recalibrate them to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. You know, I'm thinking back, I think it was 2016 that I went to a meeting at the UNC campus, Charlotte Campus downtown, sponsored by the real estate community, that was on the comprehensive plan, where they brought in the folks from Denver to talk about the kind of plan that they thought was appropriate, and our plan models that. So I do think that this is a big step for us. I do think that we have heard that we are, we have spent, or the staff has spent over three years working on something that the three years working on something that the council has not reached a consensus on. Now that is what I would call a problem, but maybe it's an opportunity. So I'm going to try to look at it that way because I agree that we've got to figure out what we're going to do. You know, we're making an assumption that, well, we can just kind of get by with something. So that's the best option with, can we get by with something? But what if we are actually required to do something? We can't stop now and start unless we know exactly where we're going forward. So one of the things that I, I, I really appreciate is that I think that the questions are coming, but they have to be specific around something. I, I really feel like we need to have, at the end of the meeting and the questions that that's going to be held, I know the tape is going to be meeting and is it next week, Mayor Protem? Is the 27th? The next meeting?
I'm not sure of the date.
Well, there's a next meeting and at some point we've got to say we are going to go in this direction. And all of the questions that have been raised about the process and the content aren't bringing us to a consensus around where we are. And I, I just am very aware that this has been a lot of work and, and, and the work now isn't really the staff's work. It's the conversation the council has to have that says this is where we want to go to give the staff some direction. I also don't believe that we can do it alone. You know, we can have the individual questions and answers, but the council has to actually, you know, we often asked our citizens to be engaged. We asked them so much, we said, please come out, give us the information, work with us, collaborate, collaborate. And yet we have to learn to work with each other and collaborate and come on, come together on some sense of direction right now. Otherwise I'm not quite sure where we land on this, but I, I think it's been an oppo, I'm going to say it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity to make a decision on a direction that we're going to go. I would like to ask the staff to actually remind us of the places that we chose to follow when we began this process. And perhaps the problem is, is that we didn't reaffirm enough. And I've heard council members say that. And I have a lot of appreciation for it. We get a lot of stuff done, but sometimes the big stuff is the hardest and the most challenging and the biggest opportunity. People are going to come here no matter what. We may not build a duplex or a quadruplex on any block, we can continue where they are, but they're going to live somewhere. So this council has an opportunity to think about how we can build and I think that's the greatest opportunity that we can participate in. So I'm going to suggest that we not go to the U D O because we don't have a U D O without a comprehensive plan. And I was going to make sure that we do have the questions. The attorney understands his role. Ty understands his role. Ms. Jackson's going to work on a time. We've got a committee meeting, a taped committee meeting, and we have the questions to get back. And I hope everyone will feel like they can get to a place of consensus among the council at our very best. That's what we do well. And I think that's really important in this matter more than anything, but that doesn't let us off the hook. I hope that that consensus says we're not going to do, or what we're going to do now. And in reaction to whatever that is now, that we commit to doing something that will take us down the road that we want to go on to accommodate the growth and the infrastructure that we need for the community. So with that, we're on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a question for clarification purposes? I'm a little bit confused now because you said within the next seven days we get another meeting scheduled, but the majority of council didn't even want to do that.
I thought four people wanted to.
To Mr. Winston's point, if people aren't asking the questions, then I'm not sure what we're doing, right? If, if we don't, I think the big elephant in the room is the single family zoning and we absolutely need the space to be able to have policy debate is what Mr. Driggs has been saying. But if people don't go through the document and, and pull out the other concerns they have and say, here's the other issues I want to talk about and do what Mr. Winston's saying is find the space to get together and talk about this, then I'm not, I'm not sure even a meeting in the next seven days makes sense if only four people were willing to do that. But we can't just have meetings for the sake of having meetings unless we're really going to dig into these policy issues.
I think that's a question for the group and I saw Ms. Watlington wanted to be recognized.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to that. Mayor Protem said it at the end.
Can hear you, Ms. Watlington.
I said, I just wanted to respond to that. The mayor Protem said it at the end. I think the key is not having a meeting, just to have a meeting. There's a difference between having a meeting, everybody coming with questions versus do your pre-work. I, I mean, I've been able to read through the document or the first part of the document and send my specific questions by page number to staff. Come with that. Then we can talk about some policy, but to continue to have meetings where everybody doesn't have the information, that's not value add to me. So I think if we're going to proceed in that manner, everybody go read the document from front to back. Bring your specific concerns. If you have questions, ask those questions before the meeting so that when we're having that meeting, we're talking about, is everybody good with this section? Great. Is everybody good with this section? No, you've got a, you've got an issue with this section? How, how, how many other people feel that way? Is there a way to be in the middle? Unless we're going to get down to that technical level, then it's not a policy discussion to me. So that's what I would need to support something like that.
And I agree with that.
So I, I think that Ms. Watlington has made a suggestion that the, everybody read the book, the recommendation, and then we have a meeting. Is that something that's more productive? I, I'm just trying to figure out your path. We need a path.
Well, that, that was the, my intention for offering to say we need a meeting that everybody, as I said, everybody's got to read this thing first and come with your questions. So, but to, but for some reason, and I don't fully understand why seven people didn't want to do that, then maybe because they didn't think it was productive, but that's what we have to understand here. At what point are we going to have a policy discussion and a debate, a healthy debate on, on pieces we agree with or don't agree with or getting feedback on? That's, that's what's missing in this and that's what I meant by saying to schedule something, but we don't need another presentation. We've been having presentations for two years intact and, and I wish more people would attend that, but you know, now the questions are coming up, that's all that matters. And so we've got to have that space to answer those questions amongst each other and first of all, ask those questions.
I think Ms. Watlington was suggesting the same thing Ms. Isold and maybe the clarification is that if you are going to have the time to read the document and show up, I think that the four people may have understood Ms. Isold, but maybe not as clearly as Ms. Watlington stated it. So I think that that's a fair question that is being asked. So if you're willing to have a meeting that everybody commits to read the document and attends with their questions, would everybody agree to do that? Raise your hand. I mean, I can see the virtual.
Madam Mayor, can I just have?
Yes, please, please.
If there are process questions or questions for staff.
I can't hear you.
If there are process questions or questions for staff, I think that, and I'll speak for myself, that's what turned me off. If those questions can be answered in the interim after you read the document and so that we're really asking questions of each other about our values and our positions, then I'm okay with that. That's the only piece that turned me off.
Well, I don't, I agree with you. I don't think that we're trying to ask the sta, the staff has been working on this for a long time. This wasn't about the staff. There are some questions that maybe that we've gotten out that they can answer, but I think they've answered pretty much everything that they can unless someone asks them a question that's different.
Madam Mayor, this is, this is Councilmember Newton.
Yes.
I think also real questions that still remain regarding the timeline here and the deadlines. And I feel like if we certainly are under this immediate July deadline for the entirety of this, of this plan, then, then we, it makes more sense to me that we would be acting with such a sense of urgency, but I would like to know a little bit more about what's, so I'd like to get a little bit more feedback from the city attorney, maybe the planning department on what those deadlines are. And so to, to Councilmember Driggs's point, there may be this possibility that, that we don't have to, to proceed as quickly on the entirety of this plan. And so I'd like to know a little bit more about what exactly we do need to proceed with a sense of urgency and before we kind of move forward with that urgency.
I think that that's fair.
And in its entirety.
I think that's a really good comment because to me, it's kind of like what Mr. Driggs said, I don't want to be pushed to adopt something with a sense of urgency and I also don't want something to just lie restless without it. So I think we've asked the city attorney to give us some information about what the law says. He can do that this week, but I would also say to you, let's not let the law that says, if, if his interpretation is we don't have to do anything, let's not let that become the reason that we don't do anything because I think this community has gone through enough actually. When you look at the number of participants and the number of contacts we have made on this plan, let's just find out what the answer is, but let's not, I heard Mr. Bakari say pump the brakes. What I would say is let's figure out how, whether or not we have the time to pump the brakes, but I would not say pump the brakes. I would say figure out how the council can come, as Ms. Watlington said, to a consensus around policy. And I think the tactics part, and maybe that's just my thing about, you know, you have a vision, you have a policy and then you have the tactics, really needs to have the council's full, complete adoption, vision, policy, tactics. That's what we're looking for here. So Mr. Baker, can you get us something fairly quickly this, in the next couple of days? But even with that, I think the question is, how long would it take? Would everybody on the council be willing to read the document? And, you know, I've had meetings on Saturday where we've tried to have good policy discussions. I don't like them necessarily, but they're often the times it might, best conversations are had with the council. So it just depends on what you guys want to do. So if you're.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bakari?
I, I just, well, if, if there are people who haven't gone through this document, that's a, that's a whole different thing.
There are people that have not gone through the document.
But I think, I think the punchline is this, none of us are, are planners by trade, right? So we can come up, I've got a laundry list of questions, but the, the fact of the matter is 12 of us can't come around a table with city staff who are professional planners and, and just even give our laundry list of the things we've found and stumbled on that we're hearing from different focus groups and folks out there. Like there are steps that this should have been done. And I know folks are like, well, different people were at the table. We've certainly heard several accounts tonight of either, you know, people feeling like they were at the table, but not necessarily being heard or the things incorporated. Like that needs another round and we need a transparent list from staff of here's where in agreement with everyone. Here's where the developers are off to one side and here's where the neighborhoods are off to another side. Right now we've got this big lump of stuff that's presented to us as this is it, we did it, right? You have any questions? We're not planners. We, we don't have the ability to ask those questions. Now, we can talk to planners, talk to the constituents, but I mean, it goes back to where we started this whole debate, which is right now, how in the world are we getting deep pushback from both the communities and the developers? Like somebody should, should, either people are all a little mad or one person won and they feel good. And we're in this situation where everybody's super mad and it just, it doesn't add up.
Mr. Bakari?
That's why I'm against us having a, a, a meeting where we bring our items to the table when legally we have an opportunity to hit the pause button a little bit, fulfill the 2021 legal requirements, push back into 2022 and then get this right, of which we need to be invited to those tables with all of these stakeholders and, and be part of the conversation, not get periodic, every couple of months presentation that we're like, oh, can't wait to see it, can't wait to find out what it is.
Mr. Bakari? Thank you for that. The complete list of areas of questions and concerns are on the website identified by section of each of this from the public. I agree with you, but I think that we also have a responsibility to read something that's available to us, the objections, the questions, the punctuation, the grammar, the vision, the tactics, all of those things that have been submitted. The staff said earlier today that they didn't want to make some of those decisions not knowing where the council was. So if we can hit the brakes, that's an acceptable decision, but we'll know that in the next couple of days. And if that is, if that, if your position holds true or your interest, the way you've stated it, holds true, then I think the next question is, well, how do you resolve something that this community has been working on for two and a half years, which you have some ideas about as well? And I think that's really valuable. So I just think that what we're trying to do is get additional information, get your questions answered, ask people to read what's on the website from everyone, get the list of people who are engaged and then have some thoughtfulness around what you see as the planners have said, what they've got to say and where you think that those things might not be consistent with the people that you represent, whatever the interest group would be. So I guess, Mr. Baker, midweek?
Texting Ms. Hagler Gray during this meeting.
Okay.
We're on the same page.
So we'll know whether or not to schedule a meeting, but I think the kind of meeting that we're talking about is the one that Mayor Protem and Ms. Watlington described, not a meeting that just is a list of, well, can you tell me what's on page two or 22? You see what I'm saying? And this is a choice. I mean, it's certainly a choice by the council. If you guys think about this and mull it over some more the rest of this week before we find out where we stand, I think that's a great idea. It's got to have some ownership. It can't have 12 different owners, but we've got to have some ownership for what's the next step. And I, I think all of us can appreciate that and maybe find some common good or link between what's, what everyone has said. Okay. I think it is important.
I have my hand up.
I'm sorry. Who's had, Mr. Driggs?
It's Driggs, yes.
Yes, Mr. Driggs.
I just wanted to say that I've had conversations with industry representatives that have gotten lists of concerns they have. I think it's important that we understand the, the standpoint of the industry because they are the creators of all of these buildings and this development. I don't think we need to be bound by what they say to us, but I think we need to understand their input because they represent a kind of expertise, as Mr. Bakari pointed out, that we don't have. So we have our planners and, and we also have this professional community of people with commercial interests who are important to our economy. So I, I hope that we can reach a point where we understand where they're coming from and we accept or reject the kind of input we get from them in, in a meaningful way. I've also talked to residents, the single family thing is, is the flash issue, I think, right now. And one of, what I've been exploring is what do we have that's good? And are we talking about patching it up? Is there anybody out there that really thinks that this thing doesn't fly? There have been very general comments about how it's sort of aspirational, it doesn't deal with priorities, it doesn't reconcile competing goals. So in my own mind, I'm trying to work through how we get from here to a place where we've, we've responded to some of those issues and have something that we can then proceed with. I, I'm on board with Ms. Isold and Ms. Watlington in terms of wanting to have us all sit down, but I hope everybody will at least look at the written documents that have been produced by the industry and come to this conversation with an understanding of that perspective as well as the understanding that we will gain from emails about what a lot of our constituents think. Personally, I think we can, we can, we can fix it. I, I think there are things we can do that will leave us with a U D O and a comprehensive plan that everybody can accept or even get excited about, that addresses some of our key priorities. But I've been very outspoken just because I think there, there are observations that I'm hearing that I think are important and relevant. And I, I hope that everybody will understand those observations before we try to finalize. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Driggs. Mr. Fitz?
I recall sitting in on several of the meetings that they had on the eighth floor when the room was packed with industry representatives discussing in granular terms, some of the contentious issues brought up by this comprehensive plan. So I would be interested in knowing, were there any transcripts available where you can document where some sort of consensus was reached by that group of, of, of industry developers and architects and things? Are there any notes that would show even some of the things that we're talking about where they had, they, they would seem to have reached some sort of consensus of agreement on how, on how best to proceed? And also, when you talk about documents, I'm, I'm, I'm aware that I think one of the industry groups said that they submitted a 13 page document of concerns that they had about the plan. Will that be available to all of us before we meet so we can see and get a grasp of what specifically that, that is really bothering them with the plan?
I think Mr. Driggs may have more emails or like that. I think he's indicated that he's had some conversations with the community. We can probably find the transcripts that we have for notes and so we'll try to get what I would call the, the prior documents or previous documents that led to some of the. this, these recommendations. But I think at some point, you're hearing from the constituents, and, and if you have those emails and would share them among each other, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I'm told that this 13-page document was shared with the planning staff.
Yes, it was. I see, yes. We will get it out to everyone. Okay?
I, I have a copy of what I think the document is that Mr. Fitz is referring to. If anybody else can't find it, let me know.
Why don't you just go ahead and send it out, Mr. Driggs, to everyone? That's probably easier.
All right, yep.
Oh, it's on the list of documents that are online from the comments, so that's, that's also included in the list of materials. It's, it may be their document, but it's included in the information that's on the website. We'll send that link again, we'll make sure it gets out. Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I've had a question, my hand is up for a while.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I've spoken to Mayor Protem and also the city attorney about this, about us having a meeting. I, I don't think that, that it's, our questions or our concerns tonight can be discounted as not reading the document. I think these policy questions are our responsibility and the reason we were voted. So I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to meet as a council to, to talk about our philosophy on, on things like this, and the, the petitions, and, and even with the zoning, the zoning drop-ins, it's not a matter of processes that we have questions about. There are policies that some of us have concerns about, but we, as a council, never have the opportunity to really meet without a, a structure or, or, or an agenda that's driven by city, city operations. So if there is an opportunity for council to have a strategic planning session where we're not inundated with information, where we can, our priorities and, and, and our philosophies, I think that that would be great for us. We could also discuss the, the consultant's recommendation. So if there is a team-building session that we're able to have and really talk about our priorities, I think that that would be an opportunity to, to talk about the big, the big ideas, like the UDO. This is the first opportunity that we've spoken about it as a group. So I think these questions were expected, or, or should have been expected. So I, I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to meet as a group, you know, again, not in a small group. We need all of us to, to hear our thoughts and, and find out what our priorities are. I, I think that if there's an opportunity to do that, a true strategy session for council, I, I think that's a, I think that would be great for us.
I think that's what Ms. Watlington and the Mayor Protem was suggesting.
Right, I told, I talked to the mayor about that, Mayor Protem, this weekend about that. So if there's an opportunity to do that, I think that that would be great.
I think that there is, if the council decides to do so. So I'm going to say that this is, what, this is what I've heard everyone say, that there are concerns about whether or not there's any possibility of meeting what supposedly is a statutory deadline, and we need to figure that out first and foremost. And even with that, we need to make sure that the ideas and questions and comments that have come from all of the interest groups, that council knows who are the interest groups and what they've said, and the staff's going to get that back. And then I think that there's been a question, a, a question for each of us to say, what is our philosophy around a comprehensive plan? I think Ms. Johnson just articulated that pretty well. And then there is a question of whether or not there is a meeting that would allow for that kind of conversation, as well as applying that conversation to the comprehensive plan, as Ms. Watlington has said. So I, I, I think I've asked several times to just put your hand up if you're willing to do that, in that context, in that framework, and I don't know if that's something that you want to think about. I mean, I know several people have said, well, we need to do something that's a little bit different, but it does take some organization to do that, even if we're doing something a little bit different than just going through and talking about policy. If we're going to actually set up meetings with various interest groups that the council wants to, we have to have some way to get to that point. So I'm going to ask once more, and before we close this out, to raise your hand if you're willing to participate in a council policy discussion around the work that's being done. After the city attorney provides the information by Wednesday on the deadline, I would still say that we need to have a, a frame for this community to be able to know that we're working on a plan, because it's, it's, growth is coming, and they know that, everybody knows that. So let's see, I've got Mr. Winston, Ms. Ashmira, Mr. Driggs, Mr. Fitz, Mayor Protem, Mr. Newton, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Eggleston. Okay, that's a larger group. Let's go ahead and plan in that direction.
Let me?
I'm sorry, who said something?
Does well.
Who? Ms. Watlington?
Yeah, I was just saying my hand is up too, in case.
Okay, I didn't, where?
You disappeared again, Ms. Watlington.
You've disappeared, Ms. Watlington, couldn't see you.
I'm on the line.
Okay, so we have a plan. I would suggest that those folks begin to think about what the agenda should be, and perhaps work with the Mayor Protem, or Ms. Johnson, or whomever, Ms. Watlington, whoever wants to put that agenda together and start working toward it. Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, we're going to go to our last item, which is council committee report-outs. Everybody has their council committee reports. What I encourage at this time and during this section is that we not just, everybody can read the reports. So the question that I, I think about is for each committee, as what we're talking about, that you ask the question of your, our colleagues, what is the most important question that you want to pose for the most important topic that you're developing either as a program or a policy? And so with that, I know that the workforce development had a large contingent of people at that this morning, or this, yes, this afternoon, I guess, and I'm going to start with the workforce and business development and ask Mr. Bakari if he has any questions for the council that he thinks he needs to address prior to the committee continuing deliberation on the workforce development plan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And of course, you can read the update. I would also encourage everyone to go back and watch this morning's meeting if you weren't able to be there, particularly because this was less about an update on the strategic employment plan, the corridor studies, the things we're doing, which all were important parts of it. And it was more about finding the, the touchpoints to other related topics, whether that's affordable housing, or transportation and transit, or cats, and our bus services, and, and planning and development. So we had great, robust conversations with the leaders of each of those areas, and we really worked on figuring out and teasing out what the cross-sections of those, of that work is. So this was just the, the appetizer for where we're ultimately going and the work that staff has been doing. But I do believe it is fundamental, again, it relates directly to the conversations we've just had tonight, in that these strategic plans become our blueprints, by which we then go and execute. And so, so that we get that right, it, it is absolutely fundamental that, that this pre-work we do with touchpoints to all of those different areas, again, not vertical, but horizontal outcomes that we're looking for is done. So I'd encourage you all to go read that, as well as, or watch that, that, that workshop that we had earlier today, and we'll circle back with more details.
Okay. All right, let's go to safe communities. Mr. Eggleston?
I'll be brief, partly because the manager went over some of what's going on there at the beginning of our meeting tonight. Also, we've got a meeting tomorrow at noon, we'll be getting an update on TMPD's search warrant policy, that I hope you'll join us for. Our last meeting, we discussed the Char- Charmec Family Justice Center, which is now going by the moniker of the Umbrella Center, and we'll be getting more information back from staff on that. But happy to take the questions. Tomorrow at noon is the meeting, and I hope you join us, because we'll have some good updates on some good work being done by our police chief.
Do you want any feedback on any of the topics for your meeting tomorrow, Mr. Eggleston? Or do you want, have any questions?
I'm always open to feedback, I don't, I'm not sure.
Questions for the council members? Okay.
I'll take questions if we have them.
Are there any, are there any questions for Mr. Eggleston? Okay, cool. Intergovernmental relations?
Yeah, I'm late, I was.
I'm sorry, did I hear someone?
Ms. Watlington, you're unmuted.
Okay, I'm sorry, I see Ms. Watlington's hand, and I heard, did I hear you, Mr. Winston?
That was for you to go. We go back to Ms. Watlington's question.
Ms. Watlington?
I apologize. I just wanted to point out the, that I appreciated the updates to the dashboard for the, for violent crime data, to be able to go to that next level and really see kind of a Pareto analysis, so that we can focus our efforts. So I'm glad to see that that has been incorporated, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversation with the chief about the CRU that we've got scheduled.
Okay.
I had, I had a question about the agenda for tomorrow's meeting. I had thought that the Umbrella Center was going to be a part of that agenda tomorrow. That's been moved now?
Yes, sir, it was covered in the last meeting, and we don't have back the information to, to move forward that discussion yet, that, based on the questions that were asked at the last community safety meeting. So that was never scheduled to be on this agenda tomorrow.
Any other questions? Mr. Graham?
Yes, ma'am. The Great Nevis Committee Meeting, I'll have a short report as well. The council got the handouts and did much of the heavy work relating to the source of income discrimination on February 22nd, which was probably the major component of the Great Nevis Committee Meeting within the last two weeks. As you can read, we had a number of topics that are coming through the committee as we speak, in reference to not only the source of income recommendations that we're putting into action that council approved, but also fair housing updates, nuisance abatement, as well as beginning to do work on the street name changes pilot program. So the report speaks for itself, and I stand ready to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Graham? Mr. Graham, I have one. Is the appointment to the, of the advisory committee for source of income going to be an informal process or a formal process that would need to be on the agenda?
I, I think that's a, a staff function.
Okay.
Ms. Watlington is available, she can respond to that, but I think.
Well, she's not, don't worry, I'll, I'll, we'll follow, we'll get something out so that we know. I just didn't know if the committee had discussed that.
Yeah, I think the staff is going to outreach to various constituency, constituency group on both sides to identify potential candidates.
Okay, thank you. All right, intergovernmental relations, is it, Mr. Winston?
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go real quick. Next week is our congressional meeting. It will be different this year, because it will be virtual, but it will be, still be good to get time in front of our delegation. We are in the process of, of completing, finalizing the kind of run-of-show for those meetings, and we will be in touch about that in the coming days. If there is anything that colleagues, you know, think about in, in terms of that run-of-show and coordinating those meeting times, you know, between now and Monday, please reach out to myself, Mr. Bakari. We will have half-hours with, with our, our delegation each, so we're going to have to use that time wisely. Mr. Bakari, if you have anything else?
Yeah, I was just going to add, that, that's really the crux of it, right? You know, we, usually, this time of year, we'll be going up to DC, we'd have time with our lobbyists to kind of strategize, then we'd go in and we'd have these buckets of time. Not only is it going to be remote and full of distractions, it'll be super condensed. So we're working with Mr. Fenton and, and everyone else right now to really make sure we maximize that time in both letting them know what's important to us and, and garnering insight and intel from them.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to that next week. So the next committee is budget and effectiveness?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I look forward to participating in Ms. Watlington's Pareto analysis, once she explains to all of us what it is. So we'll have a good time with that. I do have a question for the manager, actually, which is maybe slightly off-topic, but I'm wondering if we've had any indication of what the latest round of CARES Act funding might mean for Charlotte?
Yes, I think we have Sean Heath that's available that can give us an update. I don't know if Sean's in the next room, but in rail numbers, there is a allocation that's for CMS, there's an allocation for the county, and an allocation for the city, and I think Sean can give you some of those numbers at a very, very high level.
Yes, manager Jones, you're correct, the $1.9 trillion relief package that was passed by the House on Friday has now made its way to the Senate, and there are a number of features included in the, the draft legislation as it stands now, I won't go into all the details, but as of now, the modeling done by Congress suggests that the City of Charlotte could receive $149 million, which coincidentally is about the same amount that we received last year as part of the CARES Act.
All right, thank you, Sean. I just thought that might be of interest to all of us on council, given that this seems to be moving forward. So briefly for my report, there were three topics that the committee has worked on, the census data and redistricting, which we discussed in council. I think the status is that based on the State Board of Elections' recommendation, we're waiting to see if we get legislation that tells us how to proceed with our election. We, we heard about stormwater and budget water outlooks, as you see in the report. I think the good news is, there is that there are no shocks, right? So we'll, we'll discuss rate increases, that they're essentially in good financial condition, and I think the rate adjustments will be incremental. I would ask council to look at the March Budget Workshop agenda, and to let me know if there are any kind of suggestions related to that. The committee agreed that these topics were suitable topics for our next workshop. There are issues about solid waste services that will be explained to us and could imply a need for some action by council. Similarly, with the ADA Consultants Report, the capital investment plan priorities discussion is kind of in line with conversations we've had, you know about arts and culture, and then the budget outlooks, as I previously indicated. So again, my only request to council is, let me know if you have any comments on that proposed agenda for the workshop. Thank you.
Mr. Driggs, I just wanted to make sure, I've got the budget workshop starting at 1:30, and then, does it end at 5:30 or 5?
That schedule was established by the staff, so I, I hope somebody.
No, I mean, I think the staff, is it 5? The staff, okay.
Five.
All right, so 5, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
I thought it was open-ended.
Yeah, thank you, no. Not allowed, not allowed.
It did, it did say that, there was one place where it said that, so I think we do need to put a lid on it.
Okay. All right, so now it goes to, I think, transportation, planning, and environment. I don't know if we've covered anything about this today, this topic today. Mayor Protem?
I, my colleagues will be happy to hear me say pass. I think we've said what we need to say today on this committee, with regards to the last committee meeting. Thank you.
All right, so that is the end of, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones? Oh, that's right, our Ad-Hoc Committee on Arts. Mayor Protem, you want to go ahead and jump into that, too? Did everybody get the write-up?
Yes, we shared the write-up with all council members, hopefully you guys read that. I did get comments back from Ms. Johnson and Ms. Watlington, so thank you all for reaching out with your questions, and maybe some of the other committee members spoke with colleagues as well, so I'll let them chime in on that as well. So, Mayor Littles, you charged this ad hoc committee of council members with developing a policy for arts and culture as an economic I did get comments back from Ms. Johnson and Ms. Watlington, so thank you all for reaching out with your questions. And maybe some of the other committee members spoke with colleagues as well, so I'll let them chime in on that as well. So Mayor Littles, you charged this ad hoc committee of council members with developing a policy for arts and culture as an economic strategy for Charlotte. We recognize as a council that arts and culture play an important role in economic development by attracting businesses and visitors to our city and in providing a vibrant quality of life for all residents. And we feel that if it's properly resourced, that the sector has the potential to grow substantially into a diversified industry that provides primary and supportive jobs in the creative economy. More broadly, the sector has the ability to raise Charlotte's profile as a destination city and it also plays a critical role in addressing some of our community's greatest challenges around social justice, education, workforce development and equitable access to opportunity for everyone. So the council ad hoc committee met twice on how we might refocus our lens on arts and culture resources and those include the resources that we own, so buildings as well, to address the tenants and these tenants and in relation to the council's policy priorities regarding accountability, inclusion, diversity and economic opportunity. So a number of questions were raised and from that, council member, committee members went back and we spoke, we talked to each other for about 10 days to craft a plan that would be essentially a budget recommendation to the city manager for a 25% increase in what funding that we provide to arts and culture in this year's budget. We recognize that our arts organizations have been through a lot of trauma because of the pandemic. Many of them, well, the most part, all of them, you can't just open a theater in half, 50% or 10% capacity, so it's been all or nothing. And a lot of organizations have been hurt as well as individuals. So the, the increase in funding would, first of all, make sure that the recipients of last year's Arts and Science Council grants receive funding at a level equal to pre-pandemic levels, which was our fiscal year 2020, with an understanding, though, that we want, we have a commitment to develop a comprehensive arts and culture plan in future years. And, and what that will do is that with that funding, we're recommending to go to $4 million, but we're also saying that it would be contingent upon the private sector also matching that money so that we would have available $8 million, not only to keep those recipients whole, but also to look at other ways that we can be supporting the sector through a lens of economic development, economic development. That money would go into an individual, a separate account. We're not administering that account. We're asking the manager to contract with somebody who would be essentially an arts commissioner and would put together a table, much like really we were talking about with the Community Safety Grant, of stakeholders that would have, that have, you know, a voice in this matter in a very broad level that includes not only the Arts and Science Council and those that have traditionally been a part of the conversation, including our legacy organizations, but different voices at the table that thus far maybe haven't had that voice and that absolutely we want to have to be part of the conversation. So that would mean that if, in fact, the private sector did match that, there would be more funding available, but we're very intentional about the fact that this needs to be through a different lens. So it's not excluding the lens of arts and culture as a philanthropy, but it's also saying, and an economic driver to create jobs and to have people want to come to Charlotte, not because it's the gateway of Gastonia. So I will also let my other council members chime in. And Mr. Winston, I hope that you'll mention a great opportunity tomorrow night along the lines of what we're talking about with Delilah. So I'll let you, I'll let you all make comments.
I, I think, you know, one of, I think, one, one, one thing I would like the community to keep in mind is it is our responsibility as a city council to be great stewards of our tax dollars and to, to, to get the highest and best return on all of those tax dollars. And one of the best ways that we can do that is ensuring, making investments to get more charlatians jobs. And, and that is, you know, as full disclosure, everybody knows that I've been working in this industry for 15 years. That has been always the constant desire for folks, I think, in the creative arts, science, media community. How do we grow our, our career and be able to stay in the city that we love and where we want to be? And that's not always the case. But I think if we do look at, you know, the economic development of industries that support art, culture, science and media, we can be successful. And there'll be a couple of opportunities to talk about that as a community. So tomorrow night, Charlotte will be hosting a virtual premiere event for Delilah, which is produced by Warner Brothers, but will, for Oprah Winfrey Network. Several of us are, have been involved and I think the mayor will be part of it. I will be part of it. After the show, there will be a panel discussion with some of our community partners like the Charlotte Panthers and Tepper Sports, as well as Charles Randolph Wright, who is executive producer here. And we will start to, you know, part of the conversation does go into, you know, why Charlotte is primed to provide more TV and, and movie production jobs and what the entire ecosystem could look like. But, you know, I just say that TV and film is just one example of a sector that we can continue to grow here. And the mayor Protem and I will be having, be part of a community conversation on Wednesday evening with County Commissioner Chair Dunlap and County Commissioner Susan Rodriguez-McDowell, as well as the head of the ASC hosted by Hugh House. So we'll be able to talk about, you know, you know, other potential sectors, what support could and will look like. So, you know, this is not about any one organization. This is not about any one entity. This is not about any one business model. But this is about how do we put more roofs over people's heads and give them the ability to put more food on their table for their families? Thank you.
All right, I think now that's our last committee report, so.
Not a mayor?
Wait a minute, I had, I had, I think I had Mr. Driggs, Ms. Esmer and the mayor Protem. Mr. Driggs?
Yes, as a member of the committee, I just wanted to point out that in approaching this topic, we have been mindful of the role that the ASC has played in Charlotte and of our history of working with them. I think, though, we reached a sort of juncture where we realized that Charlotte, in order to be more competitive with other cities in areas like economic development and tourism, needed to be very intentional about investing public money in such a way as to further our goals in those respects. So the good news here is that the investment we're making is going up. There will be a greater investment in the arts and is attached to a requirement that we have a match from the private sector, so that there will actually be $8 million available for investment. We are going to protect the clients of the Arts and Science Council and talk to them about the role they might play as members of this supervisory group and how we can coordinate their philanthropic activity with the particular pursuit that we have of our goals. So I just wanted to note that I think this is a good move for the arts. I think the fact that we are stepping up our investment will benefit the arts community and we are doing so with, with a full appreciation of the role that the Arts and Science Council has played. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Esmera?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate committee's recommendations in terms of increasing the funding for arts and our cultural activities. I have some questions. I have been going through emails, I'm sure, just like we have all been receiving a lot of emails over the weekend about the new direction. So I have a couple of questions on that. I was able to go through all those emails and compile a few questions. Well, some of them were addressed by the report, but there are some other questions that have not been. So I know that we are looking at the private sector match of additional $4 million. So is that not currently feasible with the current structure of ASC?
Mayor Protem?
The, well, if we do it through ASC, we don't have the ability to really say how we're using our money with our policies. So the second step of this is that we have to have a policy, much like we did with affordable housing, when we upped our bond to $50 million, we put in place the housing framework. We've done this with Safe Communities, where, you know, the hard work really goes into framing that policy and what it is that we expect out of that return. And so that, you know, that, that's our decision to make. Those are, that's our money to invest. We're not trying to tell the ASC how to run their organization. They, you know, again, we're going to make the organizations whole that have been funded by those Arts and, the Arts and Science Council that we have provided money to. We haven't increased our money, our money to the arts and the budget team can correct me, but I think in at least 15 years, and there's this constant conversation about it and the corporate community says to the city, you need to step up. And we say to them, well, you need to step up. And so what we're saying is, all right, if we do this together, we'll step up and we'll make this commitment. The long-term goal is that there is a sustainable form of revenue for the arts because they can't continue to go every year, not knowing what they're going to get, how, where the funding is going to come from. So we need to make some kind of a commitment. But like we did with, like we've been doing with all of our other policy areas, we're saying, we do need, we need outcomes. We need to decide what it is that we're trying to accomplish. And that's really, that's up for us to do. We, you know, we can't really give that to somebody else and say, now let us tell you what to do with it.
Right, and I, I understand that, you know, we got to put the policy in place to figure out how we are going to spend these dollars that aligns with our goals. But I'm, that leads me to my second question. And one of the emails that I had received was from Ms. Bellis Wells. And she does ask a question in the email that she sent to council where she says, why create an application of ASC instead of partnering with them to address the policy goals?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the big question and that's a good question, is that we're not, we're not replicating it. We're asking to have an individual group with different voices that haven't been at the table to be the ones to create that. And in the end, they might say, we have the organization, but this is what, this is what we want in terms of how the funds are used and they want a different way to use those funds. Right now, we don't have the ability to say that. That's not up to us to determine how ASC uses their funds. So until we're willing to hold ourselves accountable for how that money is spent, then, you know, you can't, you can't keep using the same model over and over. And I'll mention that the fund, the model that Arts and Science Council was based on was workplace giving and that's not, that's gone away. United Way has had to struggle with that and make some major changes. And Arts and Science Council, I think, is going through the same thing right now. They're having to redo that. Perhaps they shouldn't have to raise that money. Perhaps we should be having a reliable and a predictable revenue stream. There's been a talk about that for years. And if that's going to happen, then we have to talk about what it is that we're investing in. And there are other, there are a lot of people at the table who want to be a part of that discussion. And the way ASC is set up right now is they have their own board and they have their own framework to go ahead and make those decisions.
And I, and I think that's where I struggle here. I'm trying to understand legally, the structure-wise, could, could we give funds to an organization with a list of things that here, here is our, here are our priorities, here is the council priority and those funds have to be used based on those criteria?
Sure, yeah, we could, if that's what the, I think the biggest challenge was, is that we wanted, we wanted to ask for this budget increase, but, you know, we're in the budget process right now. So we'll be approving the budget in a couple of months and we don't have the time to be able to go through what we want as a policy and establish a policy for how we invest in arts and culture. We want to have conversations about how our buildings are being used. And we invest not only just the 3.2 million in the Arts and Science Council, but we also pay almost $8 million a year to finance the debt of some of our biggest arts organizations that we own. So we have a responsibility to see that those are being used optimally as well. In addition to that, we have almost $3 million that goes into the public art program that Arts and Science Council still manages. So there, absolutely, the, the possibility is there that we could end up just doing it differently with the Arts and Science Council, but we're not going to be able to come to that conclusion in this budget cycle and get that done by the time, you know, hopefully the manager would agree to go to $4 million and hopefully council would agree to go to $4 million. I think the second thing, too, is that it's hard for us to say to the private sector, we want you to put $4 million in to somebody else's organization. So, you know, what we're talking about here is the potential to have $8 million to support the arts this year. We did this this way with our CARES Act money. When we said, when the manager said he could free up, because of some things that happened with the funding streams from the CARES Act, we had $1 million that we could invest in the arts and we got the private sector to match it. The foundation raised $1 million. The county ended up coming in with $1 million. But we, we had a different set of people at the table and the ASC was at the table. But we also had organizations like Hugh House, Charlotte is Creative and other voices that were representing other creatives in the community. And I think that that's important because they're also helping us understand what constitutes a creative community. So to Mr. Winston's point, we were sort of working with this assumption for the past several, couple of decades at least, of what we think arts and culture is. Well, maybe it's actually more than that. And Mr. Winston and Mr. Bakari talk about that a lot. But we're working with the same model over and over and if we want to have different results, we have to make some space to be able to talk about what that could actually look like. So it's really important and I think my four colleagues that were on the committee will agree that we really tried very hard not to say, we know how that needs to be spent. And what this is doing is it is a, it is providing space for us here to, A, hopefully get this budget increase this year to $4 million, B, get the private sector to step up as well, and C, have those conversations. And in the end, if we come back to the same place again, I hope at least that it is, that we're saying the ASC, they're our agency. I hope at least then that what will come from those conversations will be a reframing, a new lens through which we see arts and culture and our creative community in Charlotte and one that starts to put us on the map for arts and culture and gives us some new ideas to be able to not only provide it to our residents, but to attract people to Charlotte.
Can I follow up on something?
I'm sorry, I had Ms. Esmera, I don't think she was done yet, so.
I was just going to follow up to Ms. Esmera's question.
I'm not done yet. Can I, can I just finish my questions here? Thank you. So, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I, I saw that email we have all received from ASC with acknowledgement of how in the past they have fallen short in their obligation to support arts from traditionally marginalized voices and certainly they are making efforts to improve that. I appreciated that acknowledgement. And with that, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Winston?
I just wanted to follow up. I just wanted to follow up Mayor Protem's comment. You know, to level set what we're doing here, this kind of carries on from the conversation around the Comprehensive 2040 Plan. What we are proposing is guidance to give to staff so staff can understand the direction that we are trying to go and so that they can do their work and bring us back something to decide on. So the conversation, I think, that we'll have during the budget workshop is going to be very important. If folks want to change the guidance that we're giving to staff, that is totally and wholly appropriate. But let's approach it from that responsibility standpoint so that we actually do get to decide on something in the coming weeks and months that moves our community forward. Thank you.
Mr. Winston and Ms. Esmeira and Mayor Protem, you know, when we talked about this, we were at our strategy session talking about how do we develop better industry for our cultural and arts groups? But I think there's a short-term aspect to this that the Mayor Protem has really approached and explained in a way. But I would say that we should not be under any thought that we cannot, that we can only do this if we are part of the change that needs to occur. So what we're talking about is a short-term beginning to turn the map towards something that I think is the real outcome for this, is the longer-term development of industry around good-paying jobs for the creative class, you know. And I don't mean that class in the way that, you know, people doing amounts of things by statute, but actually, the people that would come here. And I've said this, you have to have, if you're going to have, you're going to have to have a violinist for the symphony, but you're going to have to have one for your house of worship, and you're going to have to have one for the weddings, and you're going to have to have one here if the film industry decides that they're going to have a production that requires a violinist. So this is more around getting people engaged in the idea that we need to look at this to support the folks that help us do what I think the long-term goal in this community is, which is to have a really strong arts and cultural sense of who we are and to bring people in this community that will be a part of it. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Phipps. And I think, is this, is there anyone after Mr. Phipps? Mr. Phipps, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was fortunate enough to be around back in 2005 when Charlotte embarked on the Culture Campus, where we moved the African-American museum from, I guess, next to Little Rock. We moved it from there uptown. We got the Beckler, we lured the Beckler here, the Mint Museum, and also the NASCAR Hall of Fame. We became a NASCAR Hall of Fame city. And during all of that, you know, you talk about economic development. I mean, you had construction going on, a new Hall of Fame being built, and then those museums. And then we had the Discovery Place getting some updates in Bloomingdale. So that's what I call an economic, you know, driver or impact. And even with NASCAR, you know, it was tied to an industry that was located right here in the Carolinas, in this, in the Charlotte area, the motorsports industry. And that's not unlike other areas of our country where you have signature presences, like New York has the Theater District in Broadway. LA has its film industry. We used to have, I mean, we used to do a lot more productions here in the Carolinas and even in Charlotte when we had the film credits. But I don't, I mean, I don't know what happened to those, but I guess, you know, they got taken away from us, so we hadn't been able to leverage those.
I think we know who did that.
Yes, but, but one of the things in all of that, I mean, I see Arts and Science Council, you know, they were really critical to a lot of this. So, you know, when you say that we want to get a matching from the public sector to our investment if it's approved, I mean, have we, do we have assurance that, that they, I mean, are they comfortable with a break from ASC on this? I mean, this seems like it came out of the blue, out of nowhere, you know, this break with the Arts and Science Council. And I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, is, I mean, and I also wonder, what is, I mean, what is the county's role going to be in arts funding? Are they going to be still tied to the Arts and Science Council? And we are over here at our ad hoc committee. It seems like we are more or less gearing up for a disjointed funding model for our whole area here. So I'm wondering, why isn't it, why is it that we cannot leverage our existing model and make improvements to it? Inasmuch as they've been around a long time. I mean, to overlay another arts bureaucracy on top of what we already have is concerning to me. And I'm just one, I'm just trying to get my head around it. I mean, so, you know, that's what's, and reading all those emails over the weekend, you know, I realized that. And, you know, and I just, I just want to question that and to see, how did we arrive at something so, I guess, so much of a departure of where we've been historically been with the Arts and Science Council? Those are my comments. I'm hoping that when we get to the vote, is there a way to de-link the increase in funding from the structure that we want to entertain? I mean, will they be two separate votes? Or would that be something that's combined as one in the same?
I, I don't know the answer to that right now, Mr. Phipps. I think that we know that the budget, we have a deadline for the budget. I'm not so sure that we have a deadline for how to organize this in a way. But the manager is going to present a budget, and I think the committee's going to continue to work on their recommendations, so. But I expect that those are two separate decisions. The money, I think, is there to support the organizations that we built facilities for, as you mentioned. And how we distribute that money is still something that the committee is working on, if that's a fair statement, Mayor Protem.
Well, I think, you know, the plan is what we laid out. And to Mr. Phipps' question, I mean, I was on the, I had the city seat on the Arts and Science Council Board a couple of years ago. And there, you know, the discussion is the drop in private sector giving to the ASC. And it was, it was getting to be a crisis. And so the response that the then-director had was that the city and the county needed to step up and fill that gap. And that was just to make up for what was lost on the private sector side. So what we're saying is that, I mean, this isn't a conversation that just started. This has been going on for a few years. And, and I said this at the time, and Mr. Phipps, I think you were still on council, that the ASC is asking us to step up. There wasn't a lot of will to do that. There was not, you know, the conversation then became, "Let's not cut the funding to the arts." And then we got, you know, this was at the time when we were looking at going from a $15 million to a $50 million housing bond. And the council's priorities were really more around housing. And so, you know, I guess the response that I'd have to you is that this is a conversation that's been going on for a while. And if we're being asked to fill the gap where the private sector hasn't stepped up, then we need to find out why they're not, what they want. And if we're going to fill that void, then we need to know what it is that we expect out of that investment. And we've got to answer that for ourselves. So this isn't, you know, to the point that we, Ms. Esmeira brought up, this isn't, we're not asking the manager for a permanent structure or a permanent person. It might be that we just want a fuller culture plan that, that also takes into account economic development. You know, do we want to be a city that has a South by Southwest-type festival? Or a Nashville that said, "We've got to be more than just about country music. We want to be about all music." You know, there's, I mean, there's ways to brand our city in a way that we just haven't approached that before. So this is an opportunity to have that conversation. This is not a recommendation for any permanent structure at all. And I'll just leave it at that, Madam Mayor. But I also want to mention that the, I did put on my Twitter account, and I hope the city will put it on their account, the link for the Delilah premiere tomorrow night. That is free. That's, as Mr. Winston said, this is a production that was filmed here in Charlotte and features Charlotte. It says that it's filmed in Charlotte. Anybody can attend that. And so, you know, people want to sign up for that, go to that link. Hopefully, again, the city will put on their social media sites, and they can sign up for that.
Move to close.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Ms. Esmeira?
Ms. Edmondson, second on the table.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Esmeira?
Mr. Bakari, I'm speaking. I hope you would give me the same respect when I do when you speak. Thank you. So I have a question for our manager. So speaking of budget and funding, could you please, when you, when we discuss the arts funding, could you please also include, in terms of this structure, the new structure where we will end up having Arts and Culture Commissioner, in terms of the cost, what we are looking at? And also, if there is an administrative fee for the fund that will need to be, that will need to be incorporated? And who manages the fund? And some of those questions can be addressed later on in the budget. But I just want to make sure that my questions are out there. Thank you.
Okay, manager has that. So we have a motion from Mr. Eggleston, second by Mr. Bakari, to adjourn tonight's meeting. It has been a really good meeting because sometimes good meetings are defined by the level of honestly, honest, candid conversation. And I really appreciate that from each and every one of you, and that's been very, very helpful today. So with that, all in favor of motion to adjourn, say aye, aye, and we are all done for the night. Thank you. Good night.